In a sense, okay. Um, hopefully you guys can see this and it's not gonna crash a bunch of time. Can you see my screen?
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
I see yours. It's loading. Yep, I got you.
All right, perfect, Tino, can you see it?
Yeah.
All right, sweet. So I got my questions here. Basically, I just, uh, I don't know. It's, um, I really just wanna feel confident going into this, uh, this account, you know, and some of the, some of the issues that we've both been having really revolve around like play discernment. Like, let me show you this, right? This is what my typical screen looks like on my, on my, or my typical chart looks like on a day. It's, uh, you know, I got my levels, I got orb and I got all this. But we've been having issues is really just finding consistent. It's almost like, in a sense, it feels like it's falling, not falling apart, but like Tino, I know has been having a hard time being consistent with the two-minute EMA plays. And me personally, I, I haven't had too much of an issue with the EMAs. But, you know, I'm looking at my screen and I just feel like there's so much more that I'm missing. You know, like, I feel like I should be able to take more plays, make something out of this, more than I already do now. Like, on Friday in particular, I lost money. I'll, I'll just be, I'll just be completely honest with that. And, uh, what I took originally was right here. I took longs right here.
Okay, that's good.
One-minute EMA. I had my confluence, I'm sorry, I forgot, I forgot to add it. My confluence was that orb, uh, that pre-market orb with EMAs, right? It was like this. I saw rejecting this. A little level here that I've been looking at. And with EMA confluence, I was like, okay, this looks pretty good. I think we might be able to break past these highs. So I took it, that paid out just fine.
So that's basically the reclaim of like the opening print essentially.
Yeah. In a sense, so. And then when I lost money was with this play. Uh, I took shorts here. Right, uh, when I saw it start to pull off, uh, pull out and, uh, I actually did this one with a little more size. That's why I ended up being a red day. Because I made decent money with this one, but I was really confident with this one. And it just, it just dumped. I was like, okay, I have confluence with this, EMAs. You know, I realized it just broke this, but I guess it kind of swept it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's it, man. That's, you, you got the answer right there. Is that two candles in front of you, you, you had all you needed to know. It, it wicked down a hair, barely me, made a new low of day. And then, and then that, look at the two-minute candle that, that was right before it, like, it just barely didn't flip the CBC. You know what I mean? But that's, that's extremely bullish. It was, I mean, it's a, it's a, is a strong bullish engulfing candle.
Yeah.
Go back to the first time when you made that low of day. Look, you have a bullish engulfing CBC. You know, that actually flips, uh, this was, yep, right there. So it flips the CBC there on the two. I realize it doesn't on the other one, but it's quite close. And then, and then the next two candles, they fail to flip it back and then you get a huge ignition candle again. So, so and then what, what happened there is if you look at the low wick as well, not only did you, like, wicks do the damage bodies tell the story. So not only did you wick down there on the candle that just slightly made that new low of day, look where it closed, put your cursor on where it closed, the closing level. Now look left, right? Right on that same wick low. So like, they couldn't even close a candle and then, and then like wig, wig down under. They just winked down under, they couldn't close under. They, they just showed you, the, the bear showed you, it's like, oh shoot, they're weak. And then, and then the bulls just drive it up on him. It's like, uh-oh, like.
Yeah. And when I took this play, after I took this play, I realized it was just the dumbest thing to do. Like, I was looking at this, I was looking back at my levels and I was like, man, why would I do that? Like, it just, it's telling you, like, it's telling me, um, price is gonna go up. I shouldn't be taking that. So that was more of a blunder than, uh, than like a, a play problem in a sense, and all that stuff. But, uh, I don't think, this doesn't happen too often, fortunately. But yeah, it's just, really, my biggest issue right now is I wanna be able to make more, like, I feel like I'm missing opportunity that I should be seeing. So what I've been trying to do is implement more confluences. So, like for my level plays, for example, what I'll do, and I have, I have some saved here, I have, uh, I've been trying to be more of a reactive trader, which is another question I wanted to ask you. When you're taking your trades, do you find yourself, and I'm sorry if this is a bad question, but do you find yourself the, really sticking to the same, like, the same formula, the same type of play over and over, or do you kind of just take what the market gives you? You know, sometimes you'll base off of maybe an orb and a level, sometimes you're taking EMA, et cetera. Like, where do you find yourself doing more? That's what I've been having trouble with. Whether I have to be more systemic or more reactive.
Got you, yeah. Um, so I, uh, first, the, no, no bad questions. Um, second, I think I, I try to be more reactive to what playbook the market or what play in my playbook the market is presenting me with at that point in time. And if I do not have something that is like instantly readily available, there is no trade, right? So like, if I see, you know, prices moving and we're around this area and we're like fluttering around, and if it's like, not like, uh, hey, go for it, it's, it's just, uh, hold on, wait, like, hold on, wait, you know, cause there's, you know, successful trading, a lot of times is like batting practice, okay? There's no fault for taking strikes. It's the home run derby. And so, you know, I can take as many strikes as I want. I can take as many pitches as I want. I don't let them go by. And then when I see the one that I, that I like, I swing hard, you know? Um, and sometimes, you know, except the only difference with the home run derby is that like, as long as I'm making contact, usually that's enough for me to generate some sort of win. Um, and some of my wins are small. Some of my wins, you know, they move up fifteen, twenty points. I trim, I trail stop, I stop. And it's like, okay, whatever, right? And so, and then there's sometimes where like, I'll do it again, you know? Two, two minutes later, three minutes later, five minutes later, I'm like, okay. The, the opportunity is still here, it's the same setup. You know, maybe I just got waked out, let me try again at the same entry, you know, let me try again, and even though sometimes it's a slightly better entry. Um, a lot of time, but like, um, you know, it's kind of like, um, I wanna be right, or I wanna be right out. You know what I mean?
Yeah. Okay. So I think that's probably one of the issues that we're having. And, uh, specifically, Tino, I know you wanted to ask this. Speaking of, I think one of our issues is that we might not just have, we might just not have a, as big of a playbook or, uh, that we're comfortable with, you know? Like, we're, we're, we've gotten pretty comfortable with the EMAs. Uh, I've gotten pretty comfortable with, with levels, right? But especially lately, I've realized that I need to start adding more confluence to my level. Cause, uh, for a while, you know, I could just mark out my previous day high, previous day low, some other pivots and, uh, you know, I can get some bigger price action, it works out. But like lately, I've been realizing in this market, especially if I wanna get more consistency, I need to start implementing more, uh, confluences. So what I've been trying to do is, you know, we find out right here, is like, let me take this play, for example. Let's see, this is on the five minute, which I don't know if that's a bad thing or not. And this isn't the greatest example, because it's super choppy. But what I saw here was price comes down, it wicks through my five-minute EMAs, five-minute orb, and a level from previous day, pulls back down and starts flipping green. This is very choppy, but I saw all these buyers down here. I saw that it really just couldn't close or push far below both of these levels. So I, you know, enter right here and that's the type of thing that I've been trying to get better with, but it's very difficult, cause number one, it's hard to say at this level, you know, what's consistent or not, what's an actual play that I can keep my playbook? Or if it's even like an uber repeatable thing, or it's just, you know, this is what happened on this day specifically.
No, actually, actually, um, I, I knew, I knew as soon as you pulled it up that this was the twenty-third, cause I recognized that price action on the five-minute chart. I recognize that. Yeah, no, you know, it's, well, it's, it's, it's rough, you know, it's, it, it is choppy, right? And it, it would, it would appear that there is some sort of algo that's kind of running back and forth, back and forth, because um, there was something, there, there, there was an objective there for sure. And, um, you know, but I marked this out, if you, if, uh, we look at this, and I actually already have this marked out, so we'll get to it if I, you know, we get to a point where I can share a screen. But like, this is, this is a very good trade. This is a very good trade. I find, I, I would say that for a lot of reasons, it's repeatable and I can dive into it more when you know, I'm showing you my screen. So, yeah, good, good stuff. Let's go to the next one.
Okay, so this is, oh, and also, actually, you know what? I'll save this one for later, I'm sorry. So reactive, here we go. There's another one. This is on the five minute, again. My confluence for this one was level, uh, fifty-minute orb, and it was kind of, I believe it was wicking through right here, close to the two-minute EMAs. Or the one-minute EMAs, I don't quite remember. But I believe there was an EMAs going on here. Overall, though, my, my main thing was, okay, I got two levels of confluence, orb, and this, and my, you know, yeah, CBC's flipped long. It looks like it's gonna be trending up. So almost like a continuation, right? A break in base for a continuation, which worked out.
Mm-hmm. Yep, this is, this is, this is a good trade. This is a good trade all day. And, uh, you know, you, I'm trying to think, five, ten, fifteen, twenty. You get, you, you, you get, no, yeah, you're good. You get a thirty-minute break in base there, just a few candles later as well. Same thing. This is a good trade.
Okay, awesome. And, um, what was I gonna say? And you don't mind it being on the five minute? Like, your entries being on the five minute?
No, why would I mind the five minute? I mean, if you, if, if, if the five minute works for you, man, like, it's, it's good. Like, you know, I, I tend, I tend, like, I, I am exclusively trading NQ. I watch ES on the ten minute. And I watch, I actually have a chart, I can see ES on the ten and the five. Uh, I see NQ, ten, five, two, one. So, um, you know, a lot of times, like, the, the, the trades that I'm looking at, that they align on four timeframes. You know?
Okay.
Right? So like, the ten-minute CBC is in my favor, the five-minute CBC is in my favor, one or two-minute EMA pullback, and we go.
Yeah, yeah, cause lots of what I've been, is that, you know, the two-minute or the one-minute down here will be really choppy and it's kind of wicking through some stuff, but the five-minute will look really clean. And my problem with that is that, you know, a lot of times on the five-minute, especially when you're backtesting, it's hard to say what price really did. You know, did it come up, then it wick you out, then it went back up, you know, what did it do? Cause it's a whole five-minute, you know, one, five, one-minute candles. And especially, furthermore, you know, when you're trading on a five-minute candle, typically your risk, at least the way that I base risk, it's gonna be a little more than if it wasn't a one or two-minute candle. It's not as preferable, but, you know, if you don't think it's a bad thing, then I don't, I don't see a reason. I haven't had really too many issues with it.
No, I don't, I don't see why it would be bad at all. Is this the, is this Tuesday?
It's Tuesday, yeah.
Okay, okay. Now, look for my, okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so let's, uh, well, let's just kind of earmark this one. Let's look at like, the one, two, and ten on this la, later. So just, I'm, I'm just, I'm gonna get it, I gotta post it now, and I'm gonna write this down, Tuesday, one, two, ten, continue.
Okay, so. There you go. Here is, uh, I already showed you this one. This was my break-in base almost, with the EMA confluence of my orb here.
Yep.
And, uh, I already showed you that one. Wasn't too bad of a trade. What I didn't like about this was this wick here, but when I saw that it was holding the, the one-minute nine, plus, you know, it's already wicking through this, I was like, okay, let me, let me get in here. I think it's a good trade and I can base for it pretty nicely.
Yeah, you're two, that, on that trade, your two-minute CBC had flipped long, and then when it pulled back into the EMAs, two-minute, the two-minute CBC didn't flip back short. So you were, you were long on the, you were long on the two-minute CBC there, you weren't long yet on the ten, but the ten had, I think what happened is the ten had actually flipped short, made the orb blow, and then you were just like, basically basing on last week's high, and, you know, kind of a key pivot from the, the prior day's price action.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. So if you actually, if you were to like zoom out a little bit and we look at those three lines that you have, yeah, look, look, exactly, boom. Yep. Yep, so, and, uh, yeah, it looks good.
Okay, sweet. Let me just check something really.
The fa, the fact that, you know, it just, it made that move down, like, under, you know, and it put in the orb low and then it closed back, and it didn't, the ten-minute didn't close back, closed with strength under that first initial ten-minute candle, it was like a weak, it was like a weak CBC flip on the ten.
Yeah.
Yep, see that?
Oh, I see this right here.
Yeah, that's weak.
Yeah, okay. I totally get that.
That's a weak flip, yep.
Yep, okay. And, uh, here, my, do you ever, and this is kind of a small question here, but, um, I was very hesitant here for a second, right? Because I saw that on the two-minute, which on the two-minute, I'm rejecting orb and I'm rejecting my level. And I was rejecting the two hundred as well. So it was like, this was kind of iffy for me taking this trade, that's why I wasn't very confident. We get to see all these like forces acting against it. And this might even kind of align. Eh, not really, I mean, sort of. But yeah, you see what I'm saying? Like, it, it was just hard for me to take this, because it looks like price is really trying to push down, like, it doesn't wanna keep going up. At the same time, you know, now we're trying to hold orb. And in the moment, even though two-minute is against me, one-minute is for me. So it's one of those moments where it's like, is this repeatable? If I have this price action up here that doesn't look as clean or as reassuring?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
What would you think about that?
I would say that it is, it is not an A-plus setup. I would grade this, you know, I would grade this more on like the, you know, B, B-minus level. Um, it runs as a suitable scalp here. The, what gives me confidence in more so in taking a long versus like shorting, like, let's say you see that upper, that one-minute candle with the massive upper wick. Um, you know, it's still closed on that one-minute nine, so I have no confidence to short, even when it pulls back up, because it's like, well, I'm seeing that the buyers are trying to curl it up. I also see that like, uh, looks like it'd probably be like the six-fifty candle. You see that upper wick, basically where your box is, uh, six-fifty, so. Yeah, sixty-one, perfect. Yeah, so you see that, it's kind of like, well, they're not driving it back down there. And the other thing too is that you just had a ma, massive bullish move off the low, like, you went under the low, then you tried to push down again and you failed. And so from failed moves come fast moves, and then it literally rockets up, and now boom, you take the, if you were to draw a fib from probably like the six-fifty-eight candle low right there, that one, yep. So six-fifty-nine, yeah, that low up until that, but bingo, dude, you almost hit the, you almost hit the fifty fib there of that little like micro move, and then it pushes, and then it probably makes, like, if you were to take that same fib, and it probably makes almost that same amount of move upward now, like, if you, uh, how should I say? Like, what's the range from that fib, like, low to high?
This fit from here to here, okay?
From there to the, to the top of the wick, like, three minutes later. What's, how many points?
This one?
Nope, uh, up, 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 just a little bit more? Right there, yeah, right there.
Yeah, ninety-six.
Ninety-six, okay, so go from like the one-minute low candle where it hits the EMA. And then, and then do the same thing up now. How many, how many points does it rise up from there? Ninety, does it go more than ninety-six?
Uh.
Barely.
Hundred and eight.
Dude, you see, man, it's just how it like, it moved in like a, a measured thing. And it's almost kind of like, if you mark the low of day to that same wick high, it'd be about a hundred points, hundred and ten, and then it's, it's, it's like the same thing twice. They just literally just moved it in a wave.
Yeah. On two, I'm sorry.
Yes. Kind of weird, kind of weird, but you see, they just kind of like impulse it, moved it up, pulled it back, impulse it, moved it up again, and then flushed.
Very cool. Yeah, I didn't even think about it like that.
It's, it's all, it's all computer-driven anyways now, you know?
How many people do you think trade on algos right now? Like, how many people do, yeah, just like solely trade off like algorithms and random bots and stuff?
Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, man, because I feel, I still feel like, you know, if you look at like, I think Wednesday's price action on the twenty-third, you know, secret, uh, Secretary of the Treasury percent started talking, and like, he said something or whatever, and somebody just slammed by. And look how, look at that candle, man, it just like flew up. And then there's sometimes too where like, people just say stuff and everybody just yanks their bid off, you know, so one, large participants still have the ability, like, um, in the Mark Douglas story, of the, the, what, the, the corn or the soybean uh, trader where he's just like the, the, you know, he's learning TA. And then the guy calls down to the pit and says like, short six hundred bushels or whatever, and the market just falls through the TA, like, it's still a real thing, you know?
Yeah.
But, um, there's probably, it's probably a lot, and who cares, dude? We're just trying to ride their backs anyways, you know?
Yeah, okay. Well, here we go. Um, next. Okay. This, again, back on the five. It was not quite reject, it was like just under my orb blow from the five-minute candle. Uh, but really, again, same thing, the confluence, the confluence that I was looking for was level plus something else. Which was the EMAs. Holds up. What I didn't like is that it was rejecting this, uh, this was like my, oh, why did I even mark this out? All right, it was my fifteen-minute low, uh, orb blow, I'm sorry. So it was rejecting my fifteen-minute orb blow, which I wasn't a huge fan of. But I saw that it couldn't close, with, it closed very weak uh, off of this level and the EMAs, pulled up, pulled back down. That was, that was what I was looking at.
Yep.
This is what I'm trying to do, you know?
And if, and what you have there is another CBC failure, right? Cause, you know, on the, on the five-minute there, the, the bulls failed to flip the five-minute back long.
You're right, yeah.
Yep.
And, uh,
That's a good one, yeah, so you're, you're, it's just, it's tough. That one's tough, because you know you already cleared the pre-market low. And so you cleared the pre-market low, you made that long wick and you moved down, right? And then, but the next candle, after you cleared the pre-market wick, it didn't move higher, it moved back lower, like, it was just like eking its way back down, like, almost kind of like this, like, I remember watching, I feel like, uh, maybe it wasn't, I didn't, no, I didn't watch this one live, I was at work. But I've seen price action like this before, where I know that like will start to move slow, and it's like moving down, it's like, it's, it's almost like it's baiting you, and then, when then there's no push back up, there's nothing to it, and it fails. So, you know, I, I, I don't think personally I would give this an A rating. Because, you know, yeah, you're under the opening print, which is, which is bearish. Um, but you've already swept the key level, which is the pre-market low. I wonder what the prior day's levels would look like there.
Look, this is Monday. I'm gonna pull it up. Monday, yeah, Monday was whack. I had, uh, this.
Oh, oh, you were gapping down, you're under the previous day. You were, you're actually, you were actually under the last week's low. That was you basing under the last week's low. Oh, that's how, that's, wait a second, that changes the whole, that changes the whole dynamic, dude. You're, you're basing under the prior week's low.
Yeah, this is a really strong level.
Yes, yes. So that is a, that is a, definitely a stronger short, and that's probably why it was moving so slow right there. And, you know, it kind of was indecisive, indecisive, and then the, the bottom just falls out of it, dude. Yeah, and you got, you know, it was like a four hundred point move down on that day.
I definitely didn't, I did not cash four hundred move points, but yeah. That would've been nice. Yeah, three ninety-six on my entry is pretty cool. Okay, yeah. Let's see.
Bro, is your, what's your background picture? Was that Thanos? What was that?
My background picture?
Yeah, what was that? What was that, dude?
From, uh, you remember The Last of Us?
Yeah, dude, what is it? Hold on, I saw some, oh, it's Ellie, bro. I don't even know what I thought I saw. I saw a flash of like somebody sitting down, and I thought it was Thanos real quick, like, squatted down, you know, just, no, dude, that's, that's, uh, my daughter and I have played this game through, like, probably a dozen times. We, we love that game.
It's, it's my favorite game.
Dude, it's, it's so good.
First one, yeah.
Yep, the first one's so good. I hope one day they'll remake it with just like better graphics.
They did, the first one?
Yeah, didn't, they remade it?
Yeah, it's on PS5.
What?
You didn't know that? Here, do you want to look it up for you?
No, bro, I'm gonna Google this. What are you kidding me? I'm buying a PS5.
Uh, yeah, it's remastered, it's on the computer too, I believe.
Oh, man.
On Steam now.
No shit, I'm gonna have to get this, bro.
Oh, yeah.
Nice, dude, all right. Back, sorry, I digress.
Get totally, I don't mind it. Um, was that on this one? Yeah, okay. Here we go. I gotta try to remember what. Again, same thing, the five-minute, just, I'm, I've been using a lot of five-minute candles, and I don't mind it, but, you know, I just glad I asked for your opinion earlier.
Yeah.
Um, so this one, I see five-minute print, it gives me a big, uh, big, big old wick right here. Five-minute orb, and I have, it's rejecting VWAP along with the orb. That was my confluence. Uh, this is in another level, this is my, my cross here, I should've moved this. But it was literally just orb and VWAP projection. I didn't like this trade nearly as much. The only reason that I liked it sort of was that it was, uh, it showed me a lot of sellers here, and it almost felt like a continuation from pre-market. But other than that, I'm sorry?
No, no, this was like, what, last Tuesday or Wednesday, last Wednesday?
This is the last one here, I'll pull it up. That's right, yeah, it's some action.
Yeah, last Wednesday. Yeah, 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 totally, dude, this is a, yep. Yeah, this, that, that, the way that wick formed under V, like, under VWAP, like, with that, with that pre-market pivot to the left was just nice, man. Like, it was just such a quality short. Where you see just how, how much they're failing. Uh, you see that pivot, like, you would have marked like four AM.
Right here?
Yeah, dude, like, if you just marked the bodies, or you marked the, the wicks, dude, they just couldn't, they couldn't do anything there, that, that whole area.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was pretty solid, man. I liked that one a lot. And then, and then they ran it back for you, and it was weaker the second time.
Yeah, it didn't really, it couldn't really push very far, it kept going. Yeah, well, yeah, my confluence, I, I, on this day, I didn't even, I don't think I even marked this level. I wasn't really sure. It just felt weak, it couldn't really break any highs or anything. I guess it kind of pushed here, but I didn't mark this level.
Yeah, it was.
I'll be, I'll be real about that.
It was definitely a weak day, right? I think it had gapped down from the prior day. Whatever reason, there was like that overnight surge with that big wick, and then it just, it just, it just died. Um, I think one of the question was something about like the, you know, like using daily levels and kind of getting an idea of like, what's what, right? And what to look for. And so what I would see looking at that day is if you actually, I think if you look, it's either two or three days prior, if you wanna zoom out maybe, or yeah, you could probably see, okay, so like, whatever that is, that's two days prior. If you look at the way that, yeah, if you look at the pre-market high, like, look at, look at how they can't reclaim you know, that area. If you were to look at like where the. Uh, no, 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 right there, yeah, right there, like, look at how shoot, shoot it over. All they did, i- if you just look over to, to the right there, is all they did, like, when they opened and the gap down, they flushed under it, and then like they came up and retested the area, retested over the initial like opening price at six PM, and then flushed it again. Like, it was just literally like, hey, well, obviously the bears are way too strong, and this isn't, like, off of the open, it's not a long, it's a short play.
Right.
You know? And it sucks, because they ended up like running it up, only to like, finally like, like obliterate price in the afternoon.
Yeah.
But that's how price action usually works. It will take the messiest route possible to shake out as many of the weak hands before finally making this move down.
Yeah. Yeah. So, overall, you wouldn't, you don't mind using VWAP, right? Your confluence at all? Like, I, cause I don't know how much you use it. Do you use VWAP often?
Uh, not for, no, um, not really. I really don't use it to like base price off of. I, I will, he, here's like my thing, my love-hate relationship with VWAP, is a lot of times in hindsight, I will see, oh, VWAP was also there. In real time, when I find myself looking at like, oh, where are we in relation to VWAP? Oh, we're right on VWAP, what are we gonna do? You know, sometimes like, I'll just be like, well, we should probably base on VWAP, let me wait. And then like, I'll kind of ignore other stuff that I see, and then we don't base on VWAP, we just launch. And I'm like, fucking VWAP, you know what I mean? And then, and then there's other times where I'm like, okay, yeah, I see VWAP is here too, yeah, I see this, yeah, I see this, like, boom, and then I'm like, and then like, I'll almost just be like, but it's damn VWAP again, is this gonna screw me? But you know what I mean? So, yeah, that was nice too, golden zone pullback, the pivot, you know, five-minute orb high fake-out breakout, equal high wicks there. It was a lot, there was really a lot to go off of. Yeah, yeah.
Tweezers, not, not bad. Yeah, I just, I only recently started trying to use VWAP, that's what I wanted to ask, cause before, I really have never used VWAP. I'm gonna be honest. I, I've always had it on my chart, but I rarely ever.
I like to.
Take into consideration.
I like to use it for helping to mitigate sentiment and just know where the majority of the participants are, so. Um, and then, you know, if, if you find that it's helpful for entering and managing your trades, then dude, that's fine, like, you know, you, you all have your own styles, yeah.
Yeah, of course. I'll have to tweak it a little bit. This one, this one was, uh, dicey, cause really, I didn't pay attention to too much of this. Like, I didn't really have that back on mind. I didn't have this level, I really just had this as my, uh, this and VWAP as my confluence. And tweezer, you know, good work, good price action, all that, it looks good, like, it's not like.
Where was your exact entry, though?
My entry is always, how I place, how I do my entries, I always wait for one candle to wick through, close preferably in the, you know, in the direction. And, uh, let's say green if I'm going short. And then I wait for the other one to open, pull up to where I needed to hit, and then start pulling back down roughly when I get about this size of a candle. In this case, it happened to be about six points. That's when I would get my entry. That's what I found to be consistent. I don't know, what do you think about that? So don't worry around right here.
Well, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, it's, uh, I think obviously in this scenario, it worked extremely well. Um, I think it's, I think it's probably offering you the the best risk reward you could hope for. Um, because you're, you're fir, you know, ultimately, new low day is definitely a goal. Well, I would say opening print's a goal there, you know, in that, in that first one. Uh, no, opening, opening print would be like, what, ten, ten points?
You mean here?
Yeah, yep, yep, that's the, that's the open, that's where, that's like the nine-thirty bell rang, that was the first price.
Oh, yeah, opening print, my bad.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, and that, that's great, dude, honestly, I think that's a great entry, man. I think that, that whole, that looked like, the great thing too, dude, is I asked you where your entry was, and you gave me the model for your entry. So I think that, that in and of itself is qual, is quality. So, good, good job.
That's good, cause I, that's literally what my entries have always been. On basically everything that I take, it's, it's textbook like that.
Good.
Uh, wick, wick through again, start pushing down, and I'll get in there.
Good, yeah, good shit.
Yeah, and, uh, here we go. Maybe it's the last reactive one that I wanted to take a look at. Here we go, this is on the one-minute. This one, uh, this one I like. This one I really liked in particular. So, obviously like, I'm at orb high, I believe this is my five-minute orb high, and I see a pullback to the one-minute EMAs. I, I've only been recently tweaking with the one-minute EMAs. You can still see here how it's pretty choppy, like, they have their moments where it works really nicely. Especially when, at least in my experience, especially when the two-minute is too far away, and I see that it keeps running up, I'm like, I'll go down to the one-minute. And like, for example, like right here, you know, pulls up, pulls up again, so it's going, I might, that would be a similar entry. But, you know, it's still the one-minute EMA, I'm not super comfortable with it. I use it as, uh, I'm making more of confluence here. Then you see press try and base here. Pushes up, uh, pushes back up, pushes back down again, bases on orb again, licking through the EMAs, and then that's when I entered, you know, the same sort of style. And, uh, worked out nicely, I guess, but.
What, what do you mean, you guess? Obviously.
And it worked out pretty nicely. Didn't run up a whole lot, but you know.
Well, I mean, it hit your target. It went, it went right to your target, so in, uh, gosh, that was, that was a tough four minutes of work for you. It went, it went right to your target. So in uh, gosh, that was, that was a tough four minutes of work for you. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Um, so what day is this?
This is, this is Tuesday, fifteenth. Yeah.
Can, can, yeah, do you mind? Yeah. So your entry was like, what price roughly?
Right, uh, entry would have been, I'm looking at it, uh, would have been around
Around there?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, can you zoom back out so I can see the left again, like pre-market and previous day?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, so it, it, it had just finished basing on the pre-market high too.
Mm hmm.
So you had like your, was that your five minute orb and pre-market high in alignment?
Oh, yeah. I must have deleted this when I was going over the play, cause I didn't see it. But yeah, oh, perfect. One minute, uh, it was cause I remember, I, I thought I was missing something. I was like, what am I missing here? When I went to review the plays to take the screenshot of them, it was cause I forgot to mark out pre-market high. But yeah, that's perfect. It's even better. So and uh, so it was orb, pre-market high and EMAs.
Yeah.
This is, this for me is like an A.
Yes, yes, for sure. Um, what about, what about the, what prior day? What's that relative to the prior day?
The prior day, prior day, I would have probably had
Okay. Yeah, so you were, you were pushing into that resistance though, which is which sense kind of why you had the little drops that you had getting over that. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Nah, bro, it's good. Yeah, yeah, because look at that first, like, the way, before, yeah, right there, when you, you know, boom, it, that was your, um, that was that first line you just threw, that little like micro pivot and it rejects off of it, comes back down, bulls reload and they're like, nope, we're still going. That's solid. I bet you on the two minute, that looks really good too. I'll write that down. So this is the fifth, Tuesday, four fifteen on uh, two minute.
Okay, two minute wasn't great in my opinion. Uh, I don't know, I know, but you have taken a
Oh, yeah.
Not right?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, dude. You, you got, look, you got that five minute orb high that you marked, which my, I, my Ninja Trader marks that automatically for me as it prints. You've got the, you've got the, the pre-market high sitting there and then, and then look dude, like, that you move down, you, you, you know, so you have this big move up, you have a Doji candle, you make a new high of day. The next candle wicks down, bodies do the damage, wicks the damage, body tells a story, buyers are holding the same bid. So when you whip down again, and like you said, that candle goes back and starts turning green, it's on, dude.
Right, okay.
That's your entry when it turns green?
Sorry?
That's your entry when it, Joe, that's your, when it turns green, you get, you enter there?
I would take it, I would take it when it's when turn green on that play because I feel like, okay, like now we have tried repeatedly and now we're flipping back green. And so it's like, okay, I can get in there green and I would be risking that candle's low, which is probably like, what, twenty points?
Uh, let's say, wow, yeah. Twenty points.
I've done this a timer too.
He just knows. Um, oh, actually, this is perfect, cause I believe my, my next question is, is about the two minute plays. And I believe, I'm sorry, not this one. It might, I think it's literally this day. That's a questionable, yeah, it's literally this day. So how, I've been taking my two minute plays, right? Very similar to how I take my level plays, almost identical. I'll wait for price to pull into the E, uh, my EMAs. It doesn't really, it doesn't matter as much if it's like licking off, cause um, with one minute, I'm very precise about it. I like to wait for price to specifically wick off of one of the EMAs, either one, right? And then pull back down, I can go on. But the two minute, I don't really need that much, right? I have, uh, I have a lot more faith in this. It pulls down, closes here and then it opens back up, pulls down, pulls up. When it starts flipping green inside the EMAs, that's when I get my entries every time. That's what I look for. And uh, I, I remember, I didn't take this play, but I had it saved because I was looking through the day and I was like, oh, this might be a good question asked. Um, this is literally how I get my EMA plays. And this is how I take them time and time again. And, you know, it's, I don't know if that's a bad thing or not, because I definitely see that I get less setups. But when they do play out, when they do give it to me, I find it to be more consistent. And I think that's a, Tino, you might wanna ask your question. He had a question about his entries with the EMAs. Um, when he's been having a little, you've been having a little trouble with it, right, Tino?
Yeah, I guess my, eh, it's kind of like a I don't know, it's really weird. I saw, actually Joe was in the, in the Discord streaming and I, I saw him take an entry and it kind of cleared it up for me a little bit. It was shorts, they didn't, I don't think they worked out, but it, it, it showed me how you took your entries, like in this particular case, and it kind of cleared up some things, but like like my entries, like I, I took a, I took a play, um, this day, kind of actually saved. Except I waited for, uh, I think I waited for a pullback. So like after it pulls out of the EMAs, like, so Luca's already in, like at the candle, you get in Luca. Um, I get, the next candle pulls up out of the EMAs and that third candle, when it wicks down, all the way down there and then comes back up. Yeah, that one. I get entry on that. I thought I got, I think I got entry on that candle. Um.
That's funky.
Yeah, no, I know.
That was funky.
Hmm.
Yeah, but like, my entries have been really odd per se. I don't know how to explain it. I have to show you, but
Do you want?
Nah, you can, you can continue for a bit.
Sure, alright, just let me know.
Yeah.
Uh, alright. Like, it's just like it's, this is, this is tough. This is tough because like on this two minute chart, all you have here is you, you know, you have a bearish, two minute bullish, two minute EMAs. And you sat on the, like basically you sat on the bodies of the, of the like last sort of sellers ask, if you will. So if you look at before, like when I told you that trade I would take, if you look at the, the top of what would be the red candle, the body of the red candle, so up a little bit, right there, boom. Look, see, see how you sat down? See how price, if you just leave your, your, your bar there, price sat down on that level and then they couldn't, they wicked under it, couldn't close. They closed back above it. They closed back above it. So it's like, it's like, okay, I know technically CBC is short here, but like you can see where stuck sellers need to get out. Um, you know, and then like if you missed it, the, the good thing is that is if, if either of you missed it, I think that the entry, um, basically at the opening price of the seven ten candle, which is the last like big green candle. I think that that one's, you know, kind of still a decent and a viable trade entry there because you have flipped CBC back long on the two minute. Um, and then, oh, hold on. Wh- when this says seven ten, is it the candle ends at seven ten or begins at seven ten?
I believe this one opens at seven ten.
Okay, okay, cause trading, uh, Ninja Trader does it, whatever the time is, that's the ending time. So, but TOS is the starting time, so it's like hard, I gotta go back and forth. So what that shows me there is that like the ten minute candle had like just had a pullback at the end of it, you know, and so I'm kind of like a little cautious just seeing what we have there. But they failed to flip CBC back short on the two minute, which tells me it's still a viable long entry and I can get in, I can get in there because CBC is still long. So, and then, you know, from there, you know, looking at the level, you're close to a bill breaker, you get a bill breaker and then some, so you get what, like a forty-five-ish point move out of that? Um, you know, depending on the, if you enter, enter there, wow, fifty, forty-nine. So like, um, I think that's good, you know. One of the things for my trades, I typically, um, and sorry if you tuned in Friday, I was way off my game, lack of sleep got off to me, but um, you know, I even then like watching it back, it was like, this really isn't that bad, but it felt terrible at the time. Um, but like, my, one of my things for entries is typically the forty point rule. Like, can I get forty from here? And so I would think that I could, you know, and, and then I would be hoping for at least to go to nineteen one fifty and then boom, it just rejects.
And so you wouldn't be concerned about it, like, so CBC flips long there on the two minute and then it breaks down like that. Obviously, I didn't flip two minutes CBC short, but well, you wouldn't, you wouldn't see that and be like, okay, now they're failing to create a new high after this move out of the EMAs, or you still think it's, it's relatively close enough to the EMAs where that isn't a factor yet?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're so well spread out and you just sat down on the, on the, on the other pivot where sellers didn't reload, they got out.
Okay. Oh, yeah, wait, this one, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't know.
Yeah, like that area, yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, also, well
You're good.
I'm sorry. Um, when you mentioned this, is this something you look at? Cause I would have never thought about like marking this out. Is this something that you're like actively looking for or were you just like, just in the moment right now, when we were talking, it happened to?
No, no, dude, I
I never noticed this.
I, I, I don't mark it, I just see it.
You just see it, okay.
Yeah, it's just like a, it's, it's just on a, on a line chart and I, I will give, I will give credit to where credit is due. The Nolly was the reason I started looking at price action on a line chart again. And what I figured out on the line chart, which I can't attribute this to her, I just, I attribute yeah, I attribute looking at the line chart with her. Is that like because she used to have a line chart up and she would like read a line chart and I wouldn't be able to like read the line chart, but the line chart shows me something. So if you mark that same level that I just bingo, it's the body. It's the body, bro.
What?
Yes.
That's so cool. What the hell?
Yes, so the way the line chart works is the, the last up candle makes the peak, the last down candle makes the trough. So that's where the last up, up candle was and then you see the last down candle, you know, that was right there. It's that candle's low. Yeah, yep.
Okay, that's very cool. I used to trade on online. When I first started day charts, like when I first started trading, I was like fourteen, I swung trades. And I would use, I would solely use line charts, cause I didn't know how to read candlesticks.
Yeah, so like, so you see that kind of like, hey, we just made a new high, now we pulled down, we've held, we've held an obvious higher low. Cause people were like, well, how do you know it's a higher low? I'm like, well, look at where the bodies of the candles are, right? But then like, if you looked at a line chart, you would say like
Holding this.
Yeah, so like when you go back to a line chart, it's very obvious a higher low.
Yeah, no, I guess that, that makes sense. That's something that I've been trying to look at more.
Yeah.
Not specifically like, because this is just, this is, this right here is new to me. But that's what I've been trying to look at more and get better about is where the candles are closing at before I get in a trade relative to orb or another level or even, even sometimes like just major pivots in price. Like, this is something that I would be looking at.
Yeah.
If price was gonna close, like right here, this is something that I will take into consideration possibly with this trade right here.
Yep, yeah, yeah, for sure.
That's new. Yeah, okay.
No, I can understand that.
Okay, and uh, oh yeah, so what did you think about the entry? This is, it's literally for me, it's, I needed to close, either rejecting or inside the EMAs, open again, and I always take the follow-up candle. So it would be this one. When it opens, I needed to, I wanted to pull down a little bit and start flipping green. That's when I get in. Even if it's just like a small pullback, that's all with my entries.
Um, so, so the only, so the only problem with getting in on that Doji like that is you, you, you did, you had yes, you were sitting on the pivot, right? But like if you got in on that Doji candle, you did not have enough information yet in order to help you make the decision because you price had not finished sitting down on that pivot that we just talked about. That's the first, right? So you already broke the pivot to the left and pre-market, you already broke the pivot from the previous day. You're actually sitting right here, you're sitting on the daily twenty EMA. So, but you're coming up into it, not sitting down on it. So you've now pushed into the daily twenty EMA, which is bearish. And then, um, so you have a, like, kind of have some higher timeframe factors and pivot and like bigger price action pivots to the left working against you. So you, at, on, on that entry right there, you'll probably be like, okay, I took a stop here and I, I may be like, I don't know why. You know, and that's where those factors that I mentioned would come into play. Now, mind you, it did exactly that. Like, all of those things come into factor, but to, to play, but just, just fifteen minutes later. Because then it goes up, it breaks a new high and then finally it flushes. And, and then if you look at that like seven, that seven forty, forty Doji there, like over the high, like, oh dude, that is like prime entry, dude.
It's important?
Yeah, it's a short, yeah, seven, seven forty-two, seven forty-two, maybe, a little more.
Oh, I'm sorry, right here, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, dude, it's like, because, yeah, put your cursor right on the top of that and then look, look to the left and and the, 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 the line chart will literally just show you that they're just deflecting off each other.
Right?
Yeah. Yeah, look at that. They just, they just deflected off each other. So, um, but that's what I would worry about with getting in on Doji. Now, once the Doji prints, you know, you kind of, it's still kind of like okay, the bears haven't flipped, you know, the bears haven't, uh, pushed it down.
Well, I mean, to be fair, I didn't see this as a Doji though. Like, I mean, it just, I just took it when it, well, well, I would have taken it if it in the moment, oh, cause I would imagine it, it's not like pulling up and then down. But again, I was, I was off at this point. I was looking at it when I was backtesting.
Okay.
And uh, to give you an idea of my entry, I, I, I mean, I wouldn't know it's a Doji.
Right, so
I can also, I'd also get it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So then what, what, but also my, my other question, and I've been thinking about this since you first started talking about this play is what about your five minute entry model? Like, why would you switch from one to the, like from a five to a two?
Okay, that's a good question. So lately, what I've been seeing is that, cause uh, for, for these like, uh, these type of plays are here where I'm really looking at orb level or maybe orb and then EMAs, that's when a lot of the times it'll happen to just line up with my five minute. I've ta, uh, I've been looking at and I wish I could have sworn I had. Yeah, I did. I had the, uh, I had this one saved, right, on the one minute. So normally when I'm looking at these, I'm looking at them on the one and the five. I think that's one of the most consistent. But that's, when I take those plays, it's specifically like, okay, I'm looking at my orb, I'm looking at my level, my, uh, in my align with my EMAs and that's when I take them you know, with the five or the one. When it comes to the two minute EMA plays, just like this, I don't typically stray from that or add too, too much confluence to it, which I don't know if that's a bad thing or not. I mean, I've, I've found it works, but I've also definitely had some issues with it. Just taking it off of the EMAs on the two minute. My two minute EMA plays are very rudimentary. That's the problem. When it comes to everything else, you know, I can, I go back and forth between the one and five mainly to take my plays.
Yeah.
But with the two minute EMAs, this is about as far as I've gotten it. I've tweaked it enough to where, I mean, I've had decent, decent win rate with these entries. But again, you know, it's still, it's still struggling. That's why I wanted to ask you about it.
Yeah, okay, I have some good, I have some good team, two minute EMA plays marked out with some like confluences and thoughts on why. So I can share that with you guys, but uh, if you split, if you flip, if you flip this to a five minute, you wouldn't be concerned with the fact that the five minute flipped bearish on the CBC there after breaking a pivot and forming a tweezer top?
Well, I mean, honestly, question, cause I, again, like this wasn't, I, I was out at this point. I wasn't even trading live, so I definitely didn't look at this. But honestly, I five minute CBC is not something I've really taken too much into consideration. However, when it comes to breaking this pivot here, I imagine on the ten minute, it possibly is wicking through, yeah, like that. This is what I would look at. This would concern me.
Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying.
So much of five. Yeah, but I, I get it. Yeah, I haven't, I didn't even think about that. It's uh
Yeah, because that, so like on the oh yeah, I'm trying to think about where the ten minute is. Yeah, so that's the, that's the start of the ten minute candle as well. Yeah, that's the start of the ten minute candle when that five minute flips bearish, so. Yeah. Yeah, or no, it's the end of it. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I, I get that. So that's something I'd look at. I just, um, in the moment, I can't say I would have, I, I'm not sure, cause again, I didn't but that is, that is something I should pay attention to for sure. I just, I typically don't really look at like CDC with the five. I only really look at it on the ten and two.
Mm hmm.
Mainly the ten. Well, I would have definitely been concerned about this, that's for sure. If I saw this on a ten, absolutely, that would have been concerning. I was just holding this.
Yep, so
Repeatedly.
They're definitely concerning on the ten and then, but on the five minute as well. You know, you have that tweezer top forming. It is a bearish. It's not only, it, it like, and that's really what CBC is, 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 it's about engulfing candles, right? Like you know, uh, it's not all that different from Al Brooks, like bar by bar, right? Like, it's, it's really just about engulfing candles and the shift of power. And, and then what Maples thought, you know, is, is taught is to, is to structure that in a way that allows you to have an entry model. Like, that's, you know, they're all, it's all the same language and dialogue, you know?
Mm hmm.
Um, but Maples really, really refined it, so, yeah. Um, you have any other plays?
Um, uh, yes, I have. Here are the more repeated ones. Oh, this one, uh, take it with a grain of salt. Again, it's just something that I've been kind of looking at every now and then, a market open. Or actually, I do look at it every day on market open, just to kind of get an idea of it. It's not super complex. It's literally just marking up my, uh, my orb, high and low, fifteen minute on the five minute candles. So wick to body, wick to body of the highest and lowest point. And then uh, price pushes up into it, starts flipping back down and uh, this day, I specifically took it around here. I think it was a little lower. I got a late entry because it moved really fast. But I, I, I got a few couple of points. It's um, it's definitely not the greatest thing to do. Uh, I, I'm not sure I'm gonna keep doing it. And, but it's something that I'm looking at because it's just very hard to catch.
Wait.
These flips.
Yeah, wait a second, though. Uh, what day is this?
This is the Tuesday.
Tuesday, on the five?
Hmm. Yeah, these I take with, uh
I thi, I, I think you marked the orb from pre-market. Yeah.
Yeah, this one.
Isn't, isn't the
Which is my
Isn't the
Fifteen minute. I'm sorry? Oh, this?
No, 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 like, you go back to that, like if you zoom in a little bit more, aren't you marking the last yellow candle before the, before the bearish candle? Isn't, that's in pre-market, right?
Yeah, it's in pre-market.
So like, you said you, you said it was an orb play, but you marked your orb
Sorry, I mean, I, I call it like a, I call it like a pre-market orb, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, okay.
For me to name it, yeah. So it's just the, what I've, what I've seen is, uh, you know, the last fifteen minutes, so this would be, you know, fifteen, but there's the highest and lowest point. These have a lot of weight to them. And in particularly, uh, the last thirty minutes are also really good.
Mm hmm.
I like to look at the last thirty minutes of pre-market, uh, later in the day as actual confluence. But in the open, when I do look at this, these like flips, these quick scalps, I, I look at just the fifteen minute. And this is one that I took, pushes up, pushes back down, starts flipping. It's something small that I've been working on, nothing too serious. I didn't want to, you know, put it out there, cause I'd save, I had to save anyways. But that's all it really is. It's um, my only problem with it, it's, it's very hard to catch plays, uh, at open like this. So what I've been doing is trying to refine it to more of a system, a more of a cleaner system. Um, that I can take as consistent, you know, setups later in the day. Not so much at open like this, cause these are just quick scalps that, you know, they're, they're just a pain to catch.
Sure.
Uh, price moving so fast. And what I've noticed is that it's very respect and that's why it's, I'm, I'm, I'm like frustrated with it, because I feel like there's something good here. But it's, it's hard to take plays off of it. So what I've just been lately, until I figure something else, I've been using it as extra confluence every now and then, if it so gives it to me. Cause I know I see constantly price and I, I have a separate file for that. Uh, which I'm not gonna get into too much, cause it's just, you know, there's just no point. But, you know, this, for example, I really how respected it is. I feel like there's, there should be something here, right? But then I go into it and a lot of the times the price action is super choppy or it's just unclear and uh, it's just frustrating, cause I wanna find something. I feel like there's something good here. But I'm not quite good enough to figure it out. Like, right here, there's another one. Right? All of these people just holding the order of this body right here and then just flushes Right here, you know, hold this body, just flushes, it keeps basing on it. Same thing, I took this one, I believe, uh, lawns, then it held again for the top part, pushed down. Right here, this is the weirdest thing. Like, why is this holding this? But it is. And there's something I've been looking at, trying to tweak with, but it's.
Put that, put that on those lines.
My chart.
Yeah.
It's twenty-seventh of March, okay. On Tesla too, I was backtesting this on Tesla for some reason, yeah.
Well, I mean, she's, she's a wild one anyway.
Tesla, one of those, this was, uh, there, twenty-seventh of March, okay. All the way back. Yeah, okay. Line chart would be, oh shoot, that's not from my chart. It would be, I think, this pivot on pre-market?
Uh, no, I think it's the little one, hold on. Oh, because, yeah, I, what I was saying, I said line chart because like, look at the first, the first red candle of the day where it sits down and we come back to that level twice. It's pretty, yeah, it's pretty close. On the other screen, it looked like they, it came down and dipped into it, but mark your level again on here. Uh, the five, you said fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes would be, so I'm sending maybe this one.
Oh. Wow, yeah, dude, that's nice. But and, and even where the first five-minute red candle closes and then it fails to go lower, like, it's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Really interesting.
Oh, I can also see, I can also see this pushes back down, taps into this right here.
Oh shit, yeah, it does. It does too. Yeah, that's, that's a lot. That's, it, it was a repeated level for, for a reason.
Yeah.
Some big short probably entered in there and they were looking to continue to get back out for break even. You know? That's a good one, too. That's, oh, it's the same one, it's one, one minute, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. So anyways, that's, uh, oh shoot, so that's, that's, um, something I've been tweaking with. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not putting too much weight on it right now when I take plays. Uh, but every now and then I'll take a flip at open like this and it's just funky and. It's something I'm looking at. I'm really just trying to figure out how I can turn this into like a repeatable setup.
Well.
I've tried the two, five, one. One seems to work the best, but again, it's just with a grain of salt, you know?
I would, I would say, you know, if you, if you, and I, I would be very curious to know your answers to this. If you go and be backtested, right, and you, you start clocking, you know, or the additional confluences, right? So like, how many of them were, um, you know, were, were long trades where we were opening or holding previous day high, right? Like, opening above or holding at, right? Versus like, you know, how many of them, you know, had we re-chased, retraced or whatever, right? Like, where are these in relative, you know, in relation to pre-market high, right? Like, um, you know, et cetera, you start like, how many times does this occur above VWAP? How many times this, you know, a short occur below VWAP, right? And so what about the ten-minute, like nine and twenty, you know? So like, in this case, you're probably above all major EMAs and VWAP and your two hundred EMA. It's just like, check, 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 check. Like, how more bullish do you want the market to be, you know?
Yeah.
Like, that, that's what I would say is just add that to each trade and then like, as you just start. Putting an X on every single confluence that you've identified, which trades work the strongest and it's like, okay, well, I identified. Five, seven other confluences and. In these situations, as long as there's five or more confluences, it works, right? So I will only take the trades if I got five confluences here, which might seem silly. But before the open, you're already gonna know if you probably got three of them or four of them. Like, am I over the ten-minute nine and twenty? Yes. Am I over VWAP? Yes. Am I over the two hundred? Yes. Boom, there's three.
Yeah.
So.
You know, that's interesting. I gotta look at that because my confluences are very like, they're, they're. I mean, I've showed you, it's really just orb levels, EMA, uh, some market structure. I rarely ever, I don't really look at. I mean, I do look at higher timeframes, but not in the sense of, am I above the two hundred, am I above VWAP, am I above forever? I'll look at it more so as what's the ten-minute candlestick doing? You know, like right here, this is pretty good strength, you know, where are my relatives to the EMAs? And that's about it, you know?
Well, and that, that's how a lot of folks trade though, right? Because like.
I work on that.
Even, even long-term investors, you know, do they want to buy if the, you know, when the fifty EMA crosses under the two hundred? That's usually, it's called a death cross. That's usually not a good time to buy. And so the only time you, you, you want to do that, typically speaking, is you would see like institutions putting in large orders of buying. And the fifty has flattened out, maybe the fifty and two hundred are flattening out and they're starting to arc back up. And then so, you know, you're kind of on the right side of that V. But, yeah, like, it's, it's just like that.
Yeah.
So. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, shoot, we've already been at this for about, Jesus, fifty-five minutes. You, um, you want to see some of these things I marked up or do you have?
Oh, yeah, of course, absolutely. Uh, let me just make sure I didn't have anything else. I don't think I should. Was my, my last one. All right, there's the email that we went over. Uh, oh, this one was.
It's Friday short.
This is Friday. Okay, it was, yeah, it was Friday short. Oh, and then this was, uh, right here. This is the last question that I had. It was, it's some kind of a funky one. Let me just go back to the five and, oh shoot, I got all these levels now. All right, whatever. So what I wanted to ask is, because Friday specifically was a really, was a really rough day, right? I know we went over this already, but, uh, I wanted to see, like, my problem is. Well, I guess we're already over it. I don't really need to, but, you know, here, I'm looking at this and I just feel like I'm missing stuff. Like, I feel like there's, you know, I'm seeing price reject over here. I got the two hundred, I got my orb, I got my levels, I got right here, prices rejecting, you know? Orb plus it's sort of, I mean, it closed below, but I guess on another timeframe, it's rejecting another level here, same thing here, whatever. But. It's hard to say, like, where would I catch a trade here? I feel like none of these give me enough confirmation. This is just one rejection. My risk is too high. I'm not sure how much I like that. This is too early to say for sure. It's just really just like an orb, I'm. Uh, I've been having issue with certain days, oh, this is Thursday anyways.
Thursday seventeenth. Okay, yeah, I can, uh, Thursday seventeen.
My entries have been having some issues with some days. I just don't know. Like, I feel like I'm missing stuff. Like, I have all my levels marked out, but it's like, okay, where would I get in? I'm just missing it.
Yeah, I think I got you on that one. Yeah, you want me to cover it? You want to get into it?
Yeah.
All right, bro.
Should I, do you want to fill it up on yours or mine?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll drive.
Okay, awesome.
So, uh, let me put you back over here. Oops, uh, returned to app. That's yours, uh.
And really, it's just a, I mean, uh, afterwards, by all means, go into your EMAs and do you want to, I don't want to take time away from that. Take too long on the, on the call.
All right, you can, you can see mine, right?
I can.
Okay, so let's just talk about, it was the seventeenth?
Yeah, seventeenth.
So, uh, seventeenth.
So I got, yeah.
So here's, here's like what I would see is, is, um, on the two-minute, this is, so like, I'll go through it, like, literally why I would take this short. And I would enter somewhere in here. Uh, shit, well, I want to draw this a better way. Let me, let me just draw it like this, let me try it like this. Uh, I would probably enter in somewhere in this vicinity. And I would, and it would be tough because I'd be like, oh shoot, like, am I gonna get stopped? But this one is a third, like a thirty-something point pullback and I've held through bigger pullbacks now because I know we're more volatile, but like, I understand where the setup is. And, and, and it's also true, but it has to do with sizing down, right? But like, okay, so here's what I would see is, uh, we, we are for sure under what is now, we're back under pre-market low, right? So we, so at this point, we've moved down, right? We broke pre-market low, we based under pre-market low here, probably took this short with success here, get stopped, trail stop here. You do not take it short here and here, and I'll cover this in other examples. You don't take it short here or here. Because you had a two-minute CBC flip following a weak, like, low of day fake out breakout. Um, now you, you go back up to the other end of the range, right? You go back up to what is like your, all of your orbs high five, ten, fifteen, thirty. Um, and then you reject VWAP and the opening print and you're back under like this little like pivot low as well. Once CBC flips back bearish here, I would look to enter into a pullback, especially if it gave me one in the EMAs. Um, with hope that, you know what I mean? Because like, now we've reclaimed the EMAs on the bearish side.
Okay, so you, you've seen price reject where it's, you, you wanted to reject off, but you think it's gonna push lower to wait for your entry. If it's not clean up there, you're waiting for it to flip and then where, where are you basing risk on? What, what, what tells you, okay, I want to get in?
What, well, if I, if I get an EMA, if I get a pullback into the EMAs and I'm like watching this candle, I want to get in here. And to be honest, like, I, there's, I don't know how this candle would have, like, actually played out, but I would just know that. This would have, this would have given me a scale at some point. And it, it's possible that we did this and then went up. And so this is the ten o'clock candle.
You took one?
Yeah, I'm gonna check the one, exactly. That's a good idea. Uh, tush. Time frame. One minute, A, exposed.
So that's hard though, because you're, you're holding through some, you don't really, it's, it's, it's not as clear of a, where you're basing risk off of on a play like that. So you're, you're okay with holding through all that?
Sometimes, because I have a really strong feeling we're gonna break the low and so the reward is far bigger than the risk. Um, so this is the nine fifty-nine candle. Yeah, so the next candle like.
Pulled down, pulled up, yeah.
Yeah, it, the next candle actually, the next candle gave me a scale and I stopped. Like, that's how this would trade, would have gone for me.
Yeah.
I didn't have to hold through this because it gave me a scale and stop like, I've just done it like, uh, so many times. But I also find too, then like, then look like here, you know, at ten oh five, that the. The ten, at ten oh five, the, the two-minute or the one-minute candle flips back bearish and now the EMAs have crossed back bearish on the, um, how do you say, on the. On the one-minute chart, right? So we go back to the two-minute chart and I said ten oh five. So here's the ten oh four candle, this ends at ten oh six. So like, we close back up in here, but like, we just close inside the EMAs. This is bearish, like, this is extremely bearish when I'm seeing it reject right off of that two-minute, oh, sorry, that two-minute twenty EMA right there, right?
Yeah.
And we're basing back under pre-market low, right? So it's like, okay, now the bears have reclaimed pre-market low, you just pushed it into it, great. There's a short risking that probably this candle's high here, so. Uh, if I was to get in here, like, when it, like, dropped down, like, yeah, it's about thirty-ish points. Pretty common lately. That's kind of what the bracket's been like. I would have taken a scale, I would have got stopped. Two-minute CBC flipped here anyways, I would have got stopped. It flushes, it flushes back under, even though it doesn't flip back bearish, I'm still bearish on it. I want to get in as close to these as I can and it flushes again. Um, because it's like, it's, it's a flip with no follow-through. It's, it's failed to, it's, and it's, to be honest, if that candle was like, it had already. If that candle had already made its move up and then was coming back down and was flipping back bearish, I'm in, I'm in, I'm in here at twenty-five.
Yes.
Because I know it's like, you already just failed. Like, you couldn't break over this candle's high, you already failed, you're coming back down. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I get that. So that's, I mean, that's so funky. I'm gonna have to work with that, but I understand.
Yeah, I'll, I'll show you some more examples, um.
I'm curious, I, oh, shoot, I'm sorry.
No, good.
Do you remember what you took that day?
Um, this is, what day is this?
This is.
The seventeenth.
Yeah.
We look at the calendar.
If you don't mind.
Seventeenth was a Thursday. It was Thursday. Uh. I ju, I don't, dude. Thursday seventeen. What?
It doesn't sound like it.
Well, I feel like I took something funky that day because I had something going on in my calendar. No, I don't know what I did that day, bro. I'm, I'd have to go back and look. Um, th, this, this looks very familiar, this here, in this area, underneath the pre-market low. Um, I feel like. Can't remember, man. I don't know, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's cool. Actually, really quick, I just wanted to show you this because I, I completely forgot.
Hmm.
Um, this was something that I was looking at on Monday, uh, sorry, Friday, that I didn't take. But it was like the same sort of concept that we were going over with all these, with the extra confluences and whatever. And, uh, it didn't work out for much, but I just wanted to hear your thoughts, like.
Are you gonna send a screenshot or how are you showing it?
I gotta pull it up right here. Yeah, I gotta pull it up right here. So it's, uh, super fast.
Yeah.
You see it?
Uh, it's loading. Yeah.
So I thought, and I didn't take, or I didn't take this, but this was, this does not look like a decent break-in base. In my opinion, like, I had a level here, like, there was a level here from pre-market. Very, I was very hesitant, a level here from pre-market, these two. And it bases right on it with orb and EMA. The only problem is that. I feel like I'm missing something here that tells me not to take this trade, even though if you did take it, you know, by all means, you should make money. That's only thirty points. That's kind of crazy.
That's on Friday, right?
It's on Friday, yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like I missed something. Like, I feel this is a decent setup and it should have ran for more, but it just, it was like, no, I don't want to. You get one good candle and you're out.
Yeah, I have, uh, I have a, I have a reason exactly why I failed on the two-minute chart, because I took the first entry there and I got, and then I took the trail stop. I did that on stream.
Right here? Wait, where? Oh. That's one, right?
Yeah, yeah, right there.
Yes, okay. So it would have basically been a very similar play.
Yeah. But. Yep, yep, I got that one queued up. I'll show you why, why I did, what I did there, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, let me stop watching, duh, 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 and I think I have to re-stream. Your screen. All right, you got me again?
Uh. Loading up.
Tino, how you doing, bro? You quiet?
I'm good, just taking into the information.
All right, so let me.
Feel free to jump in with any questions if you need to.
Yeah, for sure. Uh, so what I did here was I just marked out some levels. Uh, I know this, I realize this probably looks like quite messy, but, uh. You know, usually my charts kind of are and that's okay. It works for me. Um, I just ran through this literally as the day went on, so like. Uh, first candle here I don't like, um, just because of like, you know, it wicks up, it breaks this pivot, it flushes back down. It gives you like a bearish fake out. The next candle moves lower, baits the shorts. Comes back up and turns green. Like, when that candle turns green, it's go time. Um, because it's not, it's not gonna do this, you know, uh, and I'm. I mean, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent certain that it did not move up first, then move back down on the one and then, uh, move all the way back up. Where is it? So.
Hey, how come you have all those arrows on your chart?
Oh, because I'm gonna talk to you about them.
Oh, you, oh, you had those planned out for us?
Yes, yes, I planned that.
That's awesome.
I got, I planned them out for you, dude. I got like five days with the charts marked up like that. Uh. So, yeah, so look, like, the first minute of the candle, it moves down, like, so this is the open of that two-minute candle. So when we reclaim the opening price of the two-minute candle, it's just like, I've seen all I need to see. We're gonna break the high. And this is from, this gives you from ninety-seven, the high is, is thirty-two. It's just basically hits my forty-point rule, like, we're good.
What would you risk on that?
Uh, I, you know, this, from here to here, this is, this is large, this is like thirty. I would risk, I would risk probably like twenty. I don't want to see it coming back down. If it comes back down to the twenty and starts just doing some BS down here, sometimes, sometimes I'll get smacked. You know, but, but like, it, it just look, looks like they're doing something there, you know?
Yeah.
Um, and of course it fails, it fails at VWAP and I'm thinking, okay, we're gonna hit VWAP. So let me go back to the two-minute chart though, right? So all these, uh, like I said, all these arrows I got here. So, uh, really quickly, um, you know, here's your previous day high. So you've already rejected VWAP, you swept over VWAP, this candle turns red, this candle actually is your candle-by-candle flip short. So there's, a lot of traders are gonna get fumbled up on some of these entries because they think like, hey, two-minute twenty, you know, two-minute nine or whatever, like, I should take it. Even though this two-minute twenty entry here gives you from zero, zero, twenty-seven, so you actually get just, you know, almost thirty points if you're good with it, good with your entry. Um, this is not a viable trade setup for long continuation most of the time because you've already rejected VWAP.
Rejecting.
And, and CBC has flipped short. If you just blindly took this, you know? And then the candle makes its high and it starts to flip back red, like, just go ahead and jump out because.
Yeah.
You, the, the bear, the bulls have already failed you there, right? So no entry here, if anything, you're looking to take it short, um, you know, and it gives you good sho, short opportunity here when it comes back down, flushes. And it holds here again and you get it here and then you get a new low of day. Um, but even if you didn't take any of these, that's, that's fine, right? Because like, a lot of these trades that when you, like, you're inside and you're in, back inside the range, you know, a lot of times, yes, you're gonna come down and you're gonna break the other end of the range. But inside of a range is tough. It can be tricky because then look what happens. You're still inside the pre-market low to pre-market high range. And what do you do? You just flip back up, which, uh. Yeah, your first, yeah, your first, uh, this, if you, if you marked your first thirty-minute orb, this is probably, that, that, that thirty-minute pre-market orb is right there. So that's your, that, you know, the thing you were talking about. Um, this, we talked about this trade, this long entry trade that was good. So why is there no long en, entry trade like up here? Um, and.
Actually, I'm sorry, real quick, can I ask what that level is? Did you have marked?
The orange one?
The orange one, yeah.
Yeah, that's the thirty-minute orb, uh, opening range high and low for the New York session. And then this is the thirty-minute opening range high and low for the, uh, London session.
Okay.
Is the, is the London session just from like three? Is it, does it start at three, right?
Yeah, it starts at three.
You know, I got an indicator for you if you want to use it.
Yeah, I always wanted, I was like, what?
Yeah, three, three AM Eastern, yeah.
I can show you the indicator there.
Um, so I took this long solely based off the fact that like, hey, we were holding in these upper wicks. Um, you know, I saw just how the buying was, like, I saw it just kind of like drop down and it just started to surge back upward. And I grabbed it, you know, probably like here and like. This was extended from the EMAs and I wasn't the happiest with this, but I was just like, this looks like finally, like, we made this move down, we're gonna like. Yoink back up. Like, this move is the move I was thinking we were gonna get here. So.
Yeah.
Um, and then like on stream, many, many times on Friday, I kept talking about, it's bullish. I was calling it bullish here, I was calling it bullish here. It's bullish, it's bullish because of like, just the way this worked. So, but the thing is, is that like, again, why did this one not work? You, but just like here, you failed to flip CBC back long. Here, you failed to flip CBC back long. You know, this candle wicks back up and it just starts fading into you, like. If you're, if you're not already stopped out because you, you know, you should have, like, this is, to me, this is like late entry, quicker profit-taking. Let me move my stop up, you know? So once I see that this candle has failed to flip back long, it is, my stop must be in profit, like, must. I don't care if it's only means I have ten, ten points of drawdown or whatever, I can always retake. Like must. I don't care if it's only means I have ten, ten points of drawdown or whatever. I can always retake this trade. I I very much protection mindset, right?
Yeah.
Because I I see that my team is failing, if that makes sense.
Right. I see. I I get that. What I do normally is I'll put my break even after like twenty points.
Yeah, yeah. And that's that's
That's what I'm gonna do.
That's great too, man. Like that's a consistent thing. And and you know, to be honest, this was more than twenty points. I would have had it. I would have had it trailed anyways, but if the range was tighter and these weren't as many points, I'm just saying like, that's like my hard and fast rule. Um, so like
What was your risk? Sorry.
Yeah, so I would have, um, you know, to be completely honest, I probably would have risked like the V like, uh, I I know this one. I put it on and I had the thirty point bracket, right? So like where's thirty points? Thirty points is under V WAP. Thirty points is actually like if sixty six or sixty five and a half entry is like right here above the orb. So thirty points would give me like right about here on the previous day's high.
Okay, yeah.
You know, and I wouldn't be surprised if it like came down and touched it. And sometimes it's just like I'll be like, ah, Joe, like that was dumb, but it it already come down and come back up. So like when it does like a down and up motion, I don't expect it to go down, up, down, up, you know, like in the same like candle and I would probably be like, okay, I'm way early. I need to wait for more confirmation. Again, so this one goes, it fails. When it fails here, I to me, I don't, I really don't see, even though I know we kind of like are basing on this pivot, I don't see a good short entry here. The EMAs are like trying to cross and now we just look like we're going range to range. So if we're looking, if we're just going range to range here, like while I'm thinking, okay, even if I was to get in here, you know, yeah, it's like seventy, sixty points, whatever to the orb low. I just don't like the way this range looks. Then you get the orb low fake out. And um, I I know like I know that I took this short because it did this and I was like, okay. And I literally in the same candle was like, you know, scale, scale right here to there, trail stop was hit like here. Because I just didn't like how this joint like just yank back up, right? Um. I played some other longs like in here, like I know, like what I'm marking for entries is not the entries I took because I took an entry here at oh, like fifteen. I think it was on this candle fifteen because I want to say Gary was in at oh five. Um, same sort of reason, though, is that like we moved down under the EMAs and then we reclaimed them both. So I was comfortable taking it down here because I was like, okay, like kind of in like a greedy sense of me getting in at fifteen, like how how low are you gonna bring it to me to get into base risk off this candles low? So so is this coming down, it's coming down like, okay. Uh, all right. And it starts to push back up. I'm like, all right, well, let me take it, you know, because maybe it's not gonna go any lower. And here here's the entry. Here's where I'm like, okay, I'm probably wrong. That's twenty points. Um, and then the same thing, you know, it it ends up pushing back up. It closes back above the EMAs again, so I know that I'm good. But if you waited it, what I wanted to stress is that like if you waited solely for the two minute EMA to flip back in your favor and then you took the next EMA touch, right? Like as long as it's not, doesn't continue to be a big failure like that works out to be great most of the time. The key is watching where the pivots are, right? So like here, the pivot was like equal, like hit, but not broken. It comes back down, same thing. Then finally, you finally break over this price action and close over it. Here's where you would be like, okay, I have to stop out like CBC just flipped. And then you get this one, right? So then, okay, let me wait for the next touch. Nope, I can't do the next touch. The candle closed bearish. Wait, 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 wait. Okay, CBC flip back long. Yeah, but I wouldn't want to do this because like we've already now broken over this pivot again. Now we just wicked over the orb again and then push back down. And like it shows me these sellers might still be strong. Boom, they are. And then it it pushes back up and then hold on a second. I'm gonna think about. Okay, yeah. Then same thing. Now I get my CBC back long, but I'm under bearish EMAs. So I wait for the two minute EMAs to flip. They flipped. And then look at this like beautiful entry setup you get here because it's just flagging outward. So I can see like, okay, we've we've swept over this pivot. Fine, but I I still can't flip back bearish. Can't flip back bearish, doesn't flip back bearish. Now my EMAs are bullish and this is not flipping back to bearish. They wick down, have an opportunity, but nope, they can't. And they close it here and then this candle and even this one to a degree because it does the same thing. Because this one, like I'll zoom way in. This candle does the same thing. It wakes down. You would have the the CBC indicators lighting up, telling you it's flipping, it's flipping, it's flipping. And then no, wait, they close like this. So like if you get a wicked down entry and then you push up like anywhere on this wicked down, well, if I got in here risking, this is like, you know, then this candle wicks low, you get in at fifty eight, sixties or whatever. You know, handle only goes down like seven, eight points. You know, it's pretty. It's pretty fantastic, right? And then, you know, from this, from this like sixty entry, you know, what do you get up here? Seventy four. Okay, it's fourteen points. You probably don't take any profit, but you would take, maybe you take one fifteen points here because you you broke this candles high. So then you come back down. If you moved your stop up, you're gonna get stopped. You see, they failed. You say they flip here, you re-enter. So sometimes it's like, sometimes it's like, damn, Joe, you took a lot of trades and it's like, well, no, I just was trying to manage them and re-entering in. You know what I mean?
So actually, something similar happened to me not too long ago where I lost a trade that played out just fine because I didn't re-enter like an idiot. There I was so mad at myself, but it's something I've been getting better at. So, okay. Also, can I point this out? If you uh, isn't that? Oh, shoot. Wait, can you? I think it's at eleven forty three.
Hmm.
Eleven forty four?
Yeah.
Yeah, right there. That candle was, wouldn't they be holding that previous pivot to the left?
Yeah, it is. It is. Yeah. So like, that's the other thing too, is they wick down here and they failed to break this. They failed to actually move down and break this low. And I re I re-entered along here on like this. And I was in on this candle and I remember I remember talking on stream. I got pretty, oh, shit. Wow, that's aggressive. Um, I uh, I I remember taking this trade on stream. I remember scaling. I remember like this one moving up and watching it and then like just I I think I jumped out of another con and I was down to my runner. I literally got stopped on the runner at fifty point like two, five or fifty flat and the low of this candle was forty nine point seven five. So it must be fifty and a quarter because I got stopped out by two ticks. Again, that was the second time my trail stop got hit by two ticks on Friday. And then that's when it ran. So you can imagine my disappointment when it ran from
Yeah.
When it ran two hundred points from my stop.
Yeah.
Yeah, not fun. No, no runner on the literally the called the runner contract. So like it's that's what was the whole point.
How long do you hold your runners for?
Uh, I'll typically hold them till, you know, we reach an objective point that I set on a higher timeframe, uh, or we have a major shift in structure like a ten minute CBC flip um, off of like a pivot like, let's just say like, uh, you know, if we broke this pivot and then see ten minutes CBC was really just started to fail, I might, I might just be like, okay, like I'm out. Um, but then also like I had, uh, I I don't remember if I, how did I do this? I was, I was think, I think if I remember correctly, I was in simultaneously on two accounts, like my cash account and my PA, my um, EA accounts. Excuse me with uh, Apex. And so, um, because I do remember catching a hundred points and I got out like somewhere around here. So like I stopped out of the cash one. And I think I just held it on the Apex one, trying to get back to break even or whatever, because the the day got jacked up with the copier and uh, um, but like what what? Sorry, what I was trying to get at is like, if we came close to an objective level, like pre market high or like what my target was, because my target was a hundred points. Basically, I made my target like I was one hundred percent trading P and L. The copier had malfunctioned. It had set me set me several hundred dollars into the red. I then lost a trade. I was further in the red. I won a couple scalps, whatever. And I was like, this was the trade that not only could put me green, but it would put me over one hundred dollars in profit for the day and my objective was just make more than a hundred dollars. So it counts as a trading day on Apex and just like call it a day. Right? So I set my profit at like that level, like rough muff math because the trades were copied across five accounts and so they were, um, each each account was like slightly off. So I was trying to rough guess what I needed to make on the lowest value account in order so that all of them would be over a hundred anyways. So like, I I want to say like I got out like literally in this area, like the forties or whatever, it dropped back down. Or maybe it was even here, like the twenty eights, it dropped back down and then it just and then it still went up, right? But once we got like close, I was talking about it on stream. Hey, I'm gonna move my stop up and because what I'm doing is the risk reward is now evolving in this trade. I'm targeting one hundred points. If I'm up eighty points, right, I I my stop should be twenty points away because now I'm now risking twenty to make twenty. If I move my stop lower than that, it's unfavorable risk reward. And then as I went to only like ten, I went to ninety points, I moved my stop up and I didn't move it up to ten points away, but I moved it up five more points. I was like, okay, I'm gonna lock in five more points here. It moved up a little more. I was like, okay, I'm up five more. And I was just like up, 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 like, because I was like, it was gonna be like, I was either gonna get the hundred or I was gonna get like eighty five plus, you know? Because I was just aggressively managing that stop like right up with it because the risk reward evolves in the trade. Now, like, are there gonna be sometimes where like I take the like I take less? Sure. Are there gonna be sometimes where I take less and it falls fifty points? Absolutely. So like at the end of the day, if I didn't get the hundred and I got eighty five, that's a great trade. You know? And and because that's what the objective was to hit on that account. Now, it it just like the same thing, though, if I was to see it break the pre market high and then, you know, in in this case, we kind of on the two minute, we do chop on it and we try to base and like we do push for another like run. Um, you know, I would say like, okay, like this is, this is adequate consolidation here. These candles are inside of each other. This is like a micro flag. There's no reason for me to be aggressive with my trail stop. Right? Like we're we're good. Let's 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 just ride out a little bit more. Like this, this knife here would have been like, oh, like I would have been like, hey, hey, what's this here? And like, what did I miss? That, um, you know, I wasn't um, aware of or wasn't ready for at the time. And I'd be like, okay, that's London, that's London or pie. Okay, I don't, I don't think London or pie is gonna have enough juice to send this back down. I'm good. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Makes sense. So, um, like again, those same thing, like if you if you missed this flag setup entry here on the orb high, your next adequate entry is here after CBC flips. If you just, you know, you know, you're in a strong uptrend, it's it's unlikely it's gonna pull back down again. You'll see this happen time and time again. Um, you know, if you even if you even if you saw this candle, like this is a great entry. So because like CBC flips back over, sorry, I'm sorry, the candle flips back over the EMAs and it reclaims them. You don't get a CBC flip yet, but it shows you that the buyers still have strength. They allowed it to wick under, but they're closing back above. It's really showing you who's in control. An entry anywhere in the EMAs on the next candle is fantastic. If you still wanted to say no, strict rule, I'm gonna wait for the next CBC, I'm waiting for the CBC to flip. Once the CBC flips, you could take the next entry, the next candle is open, even if you just took the opening price and you're risking the low, it's thirty points risk. Um, you know, for, uh, I would be saying you're gonna get at least the pre market high, uh, which is gonna give you fifty points. So that's like one point six to to one. That's pretty good. Um, so you know, that would work. Any anything here would work. And that's why there's, that's why there's a green arrow there for uh, for for covering, um, you know, that as a potential trade. Um, now this here, again, people will blindly try to just take entries within the two minute EMAs and this is why this is a red arrow. This is a no go. Candle by candle flips into the two minute EMAs. You do not get a two minute CBC reclaim. Um, you know, they 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 flush down, but this is, this is a, this is concerning. You had EMA extension, you had a Doji, you had a, you had a bearish engulfing candle. It is not looking good over the pre market high. I need to see more confirmation to get in. Without more confirmation, I'm gonna be happy to sit on the sidelines and protect my capital. Um, then of course, I'm gonna, when this candle prints, I'm gonna be like, woo, look at me go being a big smarty pants sitting on the sidelines because I would just take a fat L. Now I didn't take one. This one pulls back up like this, you know, this this flush and then like golden zone retracement of that candle. Um, sorry, it's blue, but you guys probably get the point. Uh, you know, that's that's a great setup. It happens all the time. It repeats itself. You could take that one. You know CBC is very, very bearish. You take it. What's your target? Uh, ultimate like first target, I would say is the orb pie or V WAP, which is pretty close. You don't quite get there, but you would have been trailing your stop along the way anyways. And so you're good. Um. Kind of like candle flips back long here, right? So again, I don't, I don't have a red arrow there, uh, probably should have one, but this is a no short, right? Like and why? Because
Because it's flipped long and it's rejecting that level and it's
Mm hmm. Mm hmm. Exactly. We just bounced technically off the V WAP area. Your your two minute two hundred is a great target as well. Um, I'm actually like, that's like one thing I've been back testing is like how often the two minute, the two hundred, sorry, how often the two hundred EMA is a great target depending on the timeframe you're on. Um, because you'll see a lot of times in that like to answer, I think the question about like higher fright, higher timeframe analysis, uh, I really look at like where the structure isn't that ten minute two hundred. Are we over it? Are we under it? Or are we like basing basing on it? Um, so then, uh, yeah, you get this candle by candle flip long. You could where the EMAs are crossing, you could take it long. It flips back short off the level. No bueno. Wait for the candle by candle flip back long, which is unfortunately it is a pivot break, but it does work. Comes back down. You could get in anywhere here as close to the nine or even the open of this candle. Let's just say you sit. Hey, we're reclaiming pre market high. You get it at ninety eight. Uh, you're risking about thirty points to that pivot low, pretty consistent in this market and uh, what do you get up here? You get, you only get, it's like one to one, but it doesn't ever hit your risk until later. You never get anything better. This one is just kind of like a ah shit, you know, doesn't quite work. Uh, but I think you guys get the point of like the red, you're red and green, right? Um, shit, we're going like way long. Uh.
You know, do you have anything you wanted to?
What day is?
No, not really.
This is Thursday. Uh, Thursday, Thursday, two minute chart. Um, this one is really, this one is really good. Uh, bears fail to flip CBC after two, two candles. So the candle by candle stays long. So what you end up with here? So I have an indicator that auto marks the session high. So um, session high being the high uh, from anything after six PM the night before. So sometimes it is in fact the pre market high and sometimes it's like um, you know, uh, right around the same area. In this case, we had the session high that gets broken right before the open and we just barely break it and we come back down under it. So that's now the session high. So when we have a candle by candle go up, we go over it, we come back down. And so, okay, at first it's looking like a fake out breakout. Yes. But but after did this and then it fails to close CBC lower and your two minute EMAs are just like, they're really holding and they're flattening out. Um, the next candle shows you like, hey, we're bullish like this. They failed like this wick down. And then that pop up is like, realistically, I would say the entry is here and I might get a second chance at it. And a lot, a lot of times with these trades you do like it's crazy. You get this second chance at the move. And it's like, great. And this thing just absolutely rips, right? Um. Cautious entry.
You took that one.
This one?
No, Tino, uh, I was with tomorrow call. I was done at this point, but he took that one that you marked with the yellow arrow, that second one. Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I took that one.
Nice, dude. That's that's a good trade too. I I only put it as yellow just because like it's not that two, two minute CBC flip back long style trade. Um, but you, but you're obviously basing on that thirty minute orb high and you have the two minute EMA confluence. After a big rip, it's the first time you tap the two minute EMAs too. So like it's pretty consistent, you know, like you just ripped out of the range, pulled back gently and then go again.
Unfortunately, my entry wasn't the greatest on that. My entry was on the on the candle, the uh, the red candle to the right, like two, yeah, that one. I don't even, it was like on that candle for some reason because I saw it come down and then EMAs with like the CBC flip short on the two minute and I was sitting there. I was like, I'm like man, I'm just good. I was, I don't know what it was. I have uh, perhaps my like emotions written down in my journal. I'm actually looking at this. Maybe some FOMO and fear on entry. Should have gotten better entry, but was a little fearful. Um. And yeah, that's that's what I said. But then I saw how previous day high was acting like a magnet. And so I was like, I'm not, I'm not too worried about it as well.
Yeah, yeah, it was. It was. That's why I marked that out. Yeah, bro. Uh, honestly, if you entered in here, the two things that you had going for you is um, one, you waited for the EMAs to catch up a little bit more. And then, uh, two, you you didn't have to sit through as much like potential chop, you know, because like that's what it did. And then it came down here, it fails to go lower. You see it kind of go back up, it comes back down again and it just goes. It's pretty good. Um, here's like, again, the line chart would show you like how the 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 two pivot areas are just kind of like deflecting each other. So unfortunately here you get it, you you break the previous day high, you get a candle by candle flip short. This is like, I just wish I could just pound the table and tell people in house stacks like this is not a two minute CB, like a two minute entry. Like this is not the one, right?
Yeah.
But this is the one here. And then like this one is like, ah, be cautious. But the one thing that I would say here is like, why? Like, and you see like kind of where this like pivot area is.
Low or high or higher low?
Yeah, just barely a higher low, right? And it's like why did it wick under the two minute twenty and then close back slightly above it or on it? Like that's, that just shows me that there's somebody like the sellers a week and we're just reloading these buyers who just they just sort of do the second leg up, man. Uh, so this is good. Now you've broken the prior high, right? CBC flows back short like no, like that's not the entry yet. It comes back down here. You know, you would have the line chart low, higher low, you know, you just, and this is, this is choppy. But you do get like some opportunities, you know, to scalp or whatever, and it's not that clean and maybe you should just wait for it to be cleaner. Um, you know, here it flips. It flips back, you know, it's like, it's like breaking new highs, um, but you can just see like kind of how the the pivot just sort of lined up and it just kind of kept going. It wasn't that clean after the initial. the pivot just sort of lined up and it just kinda kept going. It wasn't that clean after the initial move. It just, just kinda wasn't, um. But like, it was, you know, there was also like with that previous day high and, and, uh, what else is to the? There's something else to the left? No, maybe. Yes, there is. Hold on, I think I have it on the ten. Yeah, I do. Like two nineteen-two sixties. Yeah, it's right here. So this is the, uh, the four fourteen high of day. So this is, oh, this is last week's high. That's why you're doing this. This is last week's high. That's what this area is. So, uh, you, and this was important because like Sunday night, you made this high as a huge gap up. You pushed down, then like, you know, the following day, you just barely wick over it, you know, it's the same thing. And then here's where we were just talking about on like the, the two-minute. And, and boom, like there it is. So I always mark last week's high and low and I mark them in both RTH and the extended hour session. So, it's quite messy, but like this is, you know, my, my, my default, uh, is, is, there's a lot going on here, but it's always have these levels. Like the, the colored zones are unfilled gap ranges, um. And then like if I just went to like a no EMA set, uh, let's clean things up a little bit. I just always have like last week's high from RTH and extended hours was both like right here. Uh, and then here's last week's low. So like it was important when we reclaimed last week's low on the push on the twenty-second, right? We talked about that opening drive push. So, uh, okay, so we were talking about this on the ten, uh, oh shit, I took EMAs off the whole thing. I changed these all the thirty-minute chart. Damn. Amateur move. Right, we did. Okay, so we did that one. This one was good. See, this one was fun. Uh, so, why, where are my EMAs? Here. Okay. Hide this and hide this cloud. Okay, so like, this one was like the wacky price action day. And so the two-minute EMAs were, this is the twenty-third.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think we had some, like, there was some news. So I think the Treasury Secretary percent said something. Uh, he's running his mouth or giving a speech. So like, um, this one was tough, right? It was just like, okay, well, we have a strong CBC flip. We came back into the EMAs. I don't really like the way this looks, but like, uh, you know, I, I probably, I, I might just be like, hey, let me sit out. You know, but the thing that I did like is we are sitting on pre-market high. So like those, those are the things where it's like, okay, like, well, I probably have to take this, you know what I mean? Because like systematically I have to. Um, candle by candle flips back short. There's like no long just yet. It flips back long. If you took it like, oh, I wouldn't have taken it. Uh, ten AM news candle, so never mind. I would know that's like.
Why wouldn't you take it on when it, when it flips short right there?
Oh, well, I, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take it short because, uh, you, you don't have bearish EMAs yet. Yeah, it just, it just.
I'm talking about long. I'm talking about long, like if it's a too many EMA pullback.
Yeah, cause it's, because, because I don't know it's a pullback yet. It's to me, to me, the, the, once the two-minute CBC has flipped short, it's, it's no, it's not, there's no guarantee it's a pullback. The only thing I know now, I, I, the only thing I know now is bears are in control. That's, that's all I need to know. So it's just like, you know, why am I, you're gonna square off against, against the offense as one man, you know?
Yeah.
Um, and then so they flip it back long here, but ten AM news candle, you don't take, um. And I said too, like no-go, it's a no-go long for me after that hive day fake out breakout. And I would see it probably continue and be like, well, okay, like let me wait for a retest. What happens on the retests? The EMA retest flips back short. So now who's in control? Then we hit the, we hit the ten AM news candle low and we can't close under it. So super important there. Um, ten AM news candle low right here. We don't close under it. We appear to be basing on it. You know who's in control. Now we have a flip of control. Bulls are in control. Two-minute EMA pullback, you take that. Like that is like, you take that one all day. You're targeting the orb high as the first one. But even if you got in up here at sixty-one, um, that is a sixty-point move. So you.
What I've realized.
What?
I've been using, I have not been using CBC on it too many as much as I should be.
Yeah, yeah, you'll watch.
Not nearly as much as I should be.
Well, it's okay, man. Um, it's, it's, it's super helpful. Um, CBC's too, you know, so it's long. So, okay, so boom, you get a sixty-point, boom, you get a sixty-point scale there. Uh, up here is another twenty-five points. So you have eighty-five point move. You're originally risking, let's just say thirty, uh, that's three to one. Um, and your trail stop gets hit when, when, you know, where you close it out because CBC flips back short here. Tough to close this one out because, um, you know, you are back at the orb high and you don't know that it's not gonna hold. But you know, you just wick, wicked over and rejected like a key area. Um, I don't have anything, he's like definitively written right there. I would just, just saying the CBC is just like, this is, this is concerning, right? Like why are the bears back in control? You come here. Uh, this one, this one is tough. Again, I would say like, okay, well, the two-minute CBC just flipped back long. I, I, I probably just wanna wait. Um, and just, and just to see, but you know, sometimes I take, I take an L there, like it's happened. Um, and the only reason I would wanna wait is because of this, right? Like I don't like this. Like that, that's really in and of itself. This also is, is a, I have an auto indicator on Ninja Trader. So this area here to the low of day, like all of this would be called what's, it was called the initial balance high. So at this point, like this is a ten AM candle. So I have an orb high fake out breakout that fails to break the low. But now I've had an initial balance high fake out breakout because it broke out and came back under. And then this candle gets stuffed from pushing back over it. That's like to me, cause I trade on Ninja Trader, I see that like blue box is sitting there. It's an instant like, mm-mm, don't, don't do it. So, um, so I wouldn't take, that's like, if it wasn't for the initial balance thing, that would be like, I might take the L there. Um, this one's tough because yeah, you flip CBC back long, but then you see that the, the bears push it back under. The, exactly. So they, they flip long, but then can't hold it. So let's wear it like a yellow entry.
What about, it's flip short and then, uh, okay, so it's flip short. I'm sorry. So this is pushing the side and the third candle after that, when it pulls up into the nine and it starts to reject off. Would that even be a play? Or, cause the way I'm looking at it is, it's still that green candle prior to that. It's still rejecting that big, that, uh, ugly Doji there.
Yeah.
That's just a few cables to the left.
Yeah.
So I'm kinda like, you know, is that even a play?
Yeah, no, this is, this is definitely a play.
Even if it's, even if that like previous candle was still, still looking like it's, yeah, from that.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. Cause it waked down to here. Yeah, I would say this is still a play just because like, um, because, because what will happen is the candle will push up first. The CBC flip candle will be lighting and you'll see that it failed.
Right.
And then so when it starts to flip back down, if I, if I was to get an entry here at ten, I'm looking for a bill breaker. This is a bill breaker short, perfect like setup here. I'm targeting VWAP. Right? And again, too, there are other things that are at play here, like the likely setup of the market structure and the price action shows me that like, hey, we failed. We break the orb high, we failed it. We break the orb high again, we fail it. So now I'm thinking, okay, at this point, orb range day. I'm here now at mid-orb. My next targets are VWAP and or blow. Which I coincidentally get on the same one candle. Um, and it, and you know, it does, it does pull back up quite aggressively. Like this is, this is a ninety-point pullback. I would be out. Like I would see this and I'd be like, yeah, like, you know, it was break this and then run. And so I would have, I would have probably got stopped out like here. And I'd be like, ah, well, shit. But then, you know, it gives a potential for another opportunity, even if I missed that one. Well, okay. This is where I'm gonna get punished for being impatient. This is where I'm gonna be rewarded for being, for being patient. Key differences there are being closer to the EMAs, understanding where my risk is and waiting. The orb level in and of itself, like by itself, while it does offer a decent trade, is not always sometimes the best trade or the best risk reward higher probability trade. So now when I have a trade that I have, I have the, the, this is two-minute two-hundred there, right? Sorry, this, I'm sorry. The two-minute two-hundred there, right? Like, again, like it's a target for a lot of trades, but then, you know, we base under it. Um, you have the opening print there. So the nine-thirty AM print, which held, but the buyers have held here. And the buyers tried to hold here. The buyers have now failed. They know they failed and then they've rejected it. Okay? So that's another thing. Uh, I think I have this on the ten minute as well. Shoot, sorry, give me one second. It switched all those charts by accident. Yes, here we go. On the ten-minute, the ten-minute candle by candle is short. I realize that I do have the ten-minute hammer candle here. So that's like, okay, I should be cautious, right? But this is also where like I would use VIX. And so this is VIX on the twenty-third. Uh, give me a second. Pull up. Ten minutes, alright. I'm like, I don't trade without my VIX. Uh, and that would have been, what timeframe was that? Like eleven? Oh shit, I changed every timeframe to VIX. Hold. Hold up, hold up, dude. Hold up, hold up. I know what I need to do. Got all my stuff. unlink. Change this one back to VIX. So there's this one. We were on this timeframe. This is eleven forty. Eleven forty, eleven forty, yeah. So eleven forty, I'm getting like an orb high break in base, but I'm also getting a pre-market high, like same thing, break base, right? So we've broken under, yeah, we flushed under it here. But I ju, I, I've just seen this, like it just the way it acts and like, it moved down and then when this candle turns back green, dude, it's like the same thing. It's like, nope, like it's a CBC flip fake out. And it's not gonna work. So it happens till the ten too. It flips up, it turns green, it starts to reject, dude, it's not gonna work. So the, in the same thing, if we go back to the two-minute, right? Here's where the ten-minute candle opened. That's closed, sorry. The next ten-minute candle opened here, pushed up, was green, turned red, next candle. Like, it's instant. It's a flop. It's a VWAP break in base. Like it's just all these things. And it's like, that's right, bro. How many conferences do you need, bro? You make new low a day, you could trade same, so you know, you could kinda like make your own scalps here. This, it flips back bearish here. You wait for an EMA tap here, you get a nice one. Uh, it flips back bearish here. You wait for an EMA tap, you know, like you, you get a little bit. It does flip back bullish, but you don't break over the high. If you assigned it original risk, you could sit through it and just wait. And the next candle rewards you for waiting too. So like there's just different opportunities. Um, you do, you do sweep over this pivot, sweep over pivot, CBC rejects, reclaims. You try it here, you know, you get a little bit if that's what you wanted to do, but, dude, I just wouldn't be liking this because we've already swept over this pivot. Like I, I kinda wanna see more basing on the pivot, not like chopping around it. Uh, CBC flips back short, okay. It, it closes back under both EMAs. Then you get this inverted hammer candle here. Now you're closing back under VWAP again. Another opportunity to go short, like, back-to-back candle closes under VWAP, um, you know, just, you swept the, you swept over the pivot high and you're in, the bears regain control. Like that's just shift of power. Um, uh, and this was, this would be thirteen twenty-eight, so, this is late in the day too. Like a lot of these, I will say too, like kind of as disclaimer, I haven't studied them that much in the tail end of the day. I just kind of been watching like, okay, what's still the big picture, you know? Um, earlier in the session when price action moves faster, not uncommon, you know, to see much more respect for the two-minute because there's just more participants and it's just moving faster. See how these candles are just starting to get tighter and tighter as the day goes on. Uh, kinda happens a lot. So I'll put a little less weight on the two and just more weight on like what's the overall structure. Uh, shit. Next data. Did this one? So then here's this one. Alright, so, here's the ten-minute, this is, yeah, this is twenty-second. So wicks through the damage, body sell the story. Um, I'll hide all these other ones. So, uh, after the first candle unable to close lower, baiting the bears, uh, remember where you are, you're over VWAP, you're over ten-minute EMAs, basing on ten-minute two-hundred. At the prior day's opening print, come on, brah, it's a long play only. Like, this is, if this is all you have here and the candle has closed like this, this is an inverted cup and handle. I'll see that.
Oh, I see it.
Yeah, so.
That's funky.
It, it looks funky, cause it looks funky, cause it kinda did this leg. But like, it's probably cleaner, maybe, you know, on like a thirty-minute? I don't know. Yeah, it's a little bit cleaner. It's a little bit easier to kinda like follow it, but it still does this weird like double dip, but there's the full cup is up here. So, yeah, thirty-minute was nice. Um, that's a good one. And then looking at here, this, yeah, this two, I think we, we kinda talked about this basing trade here too. I think this is the long trade we talked about too. Um, but basically that's, what's that?
That's, that's what they?
That's the twenty. Uh, there it is, uh, the twenty-second.
Twenty seconds?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that was the five-minute player based on the floor and the level.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so like basically that's just pretty much like, cause you, you had drawn a lot of the same things. Um, that's just kinda like what I'll, what I will use, what I'll do. And like, really just talking about the, the stress in the two-minute one. That like, um, how, how I use the two-minute CBC. To just have better, uh, better entries and better understanding of like, well, where are people? Where are people really sitting? Where are the participants? Makes sense?
Yeah, I took that long, uh, on the twenty-second there, after it pulled back in the EMAs. Oh, yeah. What does that look like? Uh, I took it. Oh, you know what? That's the one. That's the one I gotta stop down. I took it, so you know, it's, uh, the first pullback into the EMAs really. Like the first pullback into the nine after that big move up.
Right here.
Like right, yeah, right. I literally took it like right where your cursor is like on the nine, basically.
Nice.
Cause there's, it's also, I mean, for me, I, I was just like bouncing off, um, the, the bill as well. Like there.
Yep.
So.
Yep. And also like the CBC flip short and then like hammer candle here off EMAs. Again, they can't close lower. And then so, yeah, it was pretty, it's, it's just showing you bearish weakness now. Cause they, there was no follow-through to be had and the EMAs were really spreading out.
That's the one that I got. This is the one that I'm so disappointed in myself for losing. Cause I shouldn't have lost this trade. I literally got in around, uh,
I'm just looking over to see what we had here. Bro, this is the, this is the, is this the previous week's low or something again? Is that where we're at?
I don't think so.
Yeah, it was right here. This is.
I thought that was, uh, I would have done. I was just saying that anyways, that's, uh, the play that I took on a two-minute and, uh, got stopped and didn't re-enter for whatever reason. I had a too tight of a stop and then didn't re-enter. It was, um, Was it when the first candle? No, no, it was the second one, the second one. And I was about to re-enter in the third one, but I was just mad at myself, so I avoided that play and then. Mine was like the first one, like three points above the bill. Really? Yeah, a little bit risky. Funky. Yeah, I tried to be a little safer with mine, but I still had too tight of a stop. I think I had like a literally candle, candle tight stop loss. I normally give it a little bit of leeway. Oh, no, I, I always do my twen, my twenty points. I was just like, I, I normally do candles. It was also, I'm looking at it now, was also like off of a pre-market pivot the pri, the previous day.
Yeah, the previous day, yeah. I see that. So it was, there was a bigger, bigger move here, right? Where they, on the thirty-minute, you see they were stair stepping it down, right? Flush down, flush, right? So then here's your cup, right? Here's your handle and like you're pulling back down, sitting here and then put. Yeah, it was, it's quite aggressive, but it was good. Good, man. Good trade. Trade all day, um. Yeah, I marked someone's like where to like be cautious and you get like the flip, it's okay. Wait for the EMAs, you know, you see this again, like this is a good opportunity to retake because, yes, they broke the orb. Like this is just like classic, oh, hey, where are a lot of people gonna put their stops? They're probably gonna put them under the orb. Well, there's where retail gets stopped and then they just launch, you know?
Yeah. And where would your entry be on that?
Here? On this one?
Yeah.
Um, well shit dude, I, I would have for sure played it right here. Absolutely. Because like you're sitting on this pivot, et cetera. I see the same pivot holding, you know, same area is, is, has held here the whole time. This is, oh, the third, where's the thirty-minute? So, yeah, so the thirty-minute candle's gonna close like damn near orb high. You see this kinda sitting here. If I, if I took this play, you know, I saw, okay, like this, pull this up, okay? You know, then I, when I see this move down here, we can't break this pivot low and they just snap it back up. You know, then I, when I see this move down here, we can't break this pivot low and they just snap it back up. I'll probably get in as soon as that next candle print, like as soon as this candle prints and it closes like that, I'm like, yeah, I'm gonna take it. Because, because I know I can risk that candles low and, you know, I'll just try to be a little, like, does that's the start of a new ten minute candle as well, so the new ten minute candle opened here, it came down, a lot of times the a lot of times, guys, you'll go back and see this. Ten minute candles will open and when we're in a bull trend, the first two minutes are bearish.
Red, yeah.
And so ten minute candle opens, it flushes, it starts to come back up here, now we're at ten O two. Ten O two, it's like, okay, well, like, I'll see if you're gonna give me anything lower, right, cause you're gonna give me anything lower, like, alright. I'll take it for less, I'll risk less, like, thank you, and then wh- where's first target, right, like, first target, I would, we could tentatively see as being right here, which is the full bill, so like if I looked at this level and said okay, like, what's the price, okay, I'll, I'll take one off at three hundred, you know, because it's, it's a bill retest, but I've already, I've already seen that the bears couldn't break this low, so like I I should trust that this high is gonna be broken, right, because it's like simple market structure, like you know, for so, so far, like, this is not a strong high because it failed to produce a new low, so this low holds. But this low fails to, to, you know, is this low a strong low, you don't know yet, oh, we failed to make a new high, we come back down. This low is still strong, this low, this, yeah, it's slightly higher, this, I know this long is strong, is protected, so then where are we likely to go? A protected low is likely to break this, this week high initially and potentially push to higher day, that's exactly what happens, it comes back down. You know, wicks, right, and then even then, like, where does this fall? These wicks fall like right on this like old, like weak low, or sorry, yeah, weak, weak high that gets broken. Um, so if you were to look at this like on a two minute line chart, you would have a peak that sits here and a peak that sits here and then like that's where it's just gonna flow, right, because remember, uh, the, the peaks are, um, the peaks are always gonna be the top of the green candle and I'll just get the prices a little out of the way so you can see them easier. Um, and, and that's where it's gonna be sitting, so it's like, okay, we pushed up, we came down, we pushed up again. This one holds, you end up putting in a slightly lower high on that line chart, you come back down. Here's your obvious higher low on the line chart, you know, and it just pushes, line chart, push. Base, where are we basing, right, like, yeah, we, people would say though, oh, well, you, but you broke this micro like low, well, I mean, dude, this is like on the line chart. This is how this is gonna look, it's gonna look like, this is gonna just skip over this, it's gonna look like this. And then you're gonna have a little dip and then you're gonna have this. Yeah, and it's like this little like micro thing, it's like nah, wait, don't worry, don't worry about that, right, don't, don't even play with that. Um, and if you don't want to, then just wait for the candle by candle flip back long and then, okay, I'll take it risking that, and then, well, I'm taking it risking the same pivot I should have got in on, you know? And then, oh, look what pivot holds over here. And then you, and then you get a higher low, like but in this, in this one, like, this is tough, because, but like, I've seen this type of reversal, because, and I think partly is due to the fact that the market is inherently bullish, you know, we obviously are in an uptrend, right, higher timeframes are still bullish. Um, I would say candle by candle is definitely short here on the ten, but, um. Uh, I wondered, where are the ten minute EMAs right? Let me just, what? Right here. Yeah, so, okay, so we just sat down inside the ten minute nine and twenty. Uh, this is, the cloud that I would have, I was about to turn off is Ripster's five twelve cloud, so Ripster would say uh, if it breaks, you know, and closes through the twelve, the twelve EMA, you have to get out. So, but, um, I, I know also too, that like again, from just seeing enough of like Ripster's charts, uh, he would, you know, he would say, look, you're basing here on this or you're flagging. Uh, you know, he, he's, he is posted charts that look like this before flags breaks, you know?
Yeah.
Right, or like this flag, or like basically we'll do like this, you know, flag break. Uh, but yeah, so uh, I think it's just because the market is inherently bullish, you just see that like you'll get these like large impulse candle reclaim the EMAs, like weak push back down, okay, fine, if you want to short this, that's fine, you wait for the pullback, you take the short, you, you know, you get like a you, you don't get much, honestly, like, you don't even really get much to scale, you're gonna get stopped, honestly. You're just gonna get stopped and then you're gonna sit there and you're gonna be like, how did I not see this coming? And then it's like, well, two minutes CBC never flipped in your favor, if you would have just waited for two minutes CBC to flip in your favor, well, well, yeah, but we rejected over the EMAs and we closed back down through them, like, yeah, uh, we did. However, look where you are, so like, people just sometimes get so overly fixated on like, oh, that two minutes CBC shit doesn't work. And it's like, what part about it wouldn't work, if you waited for it to flip bearish, you'd be, you'd, you'd have better risk. And you, it's, it's, you only, you can't take, you can't take a puzzle piece out of the box and say, oh, look, it's the Mona Lisa, like dude, you don't have the whole picture. My wife's laughing at me for saying that. Yeah, like, is that, so like, but even, and like, like, the thing is with trades like this, it's just like, oh, well, I missed this whole fucking move, I got my face ripped off, blah, 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 blah. Well, maybe the, too, that this move isn't a tradable move for you, like maybe this trade or this whatever. It doesn't fit your entry model, your criteria, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and we should, we should look at like, go back, I'll go back to the, we go back to the five. And let's see what that looks like on the five, uh. Uh, on the five, it's a ten fifty candle, so by ten fifty five, you've reclaimed, you know, back in the EMAs and you flipped back long, so move down, you know, small body candle here, uh, then pushes back, what's this called, this is, this is a bullish harami pattern or some shit, I, Charlez knows the patterns like the back of his hand, I don't know. Um, but this is, but anyways, this is, again, whether it's bar by bar, candle by candle, you have a bullish engulfing, you have a shift in power. The five minute has told you that you have a shift in power, so this is, this is done by eleven fifty, so that's eleven fifty five. Oh, look where the eleven fifty five candle is, right there, dead center of that, of that candle. So now I know, I've got a change in power on the two and the five. And I have the ten, the ten minute candle, sitting on top of a key level, which, wait a second, hold on, if I was on Ninja Trader. Uh, yeah, if I was on Ninja Trader, guess where my blue box is? With, uh, that four, four, oh, God, that's terrible, forgive me, forgive me, uh, but anyways, you know, this is, that's not even any better. Um, that's where my initial balance high is, so now it's like, well, wait a second, we just pushed up, we, we wicked into the initial balance area. I can see where all this price action is sitting, oh, wait, now we're back off of the initial balance and we, what have we done, we've just drifted under it. So it's like, this is, this is ready to go. And so, but, but it's the thing, it's like, you know, well, maybe you're not trading then, or it's kind of like a dark blue, is it gonna work, oh, God, these are terrible, um. You guys, yeah, dude, TOS sucks, you guys on Trading View, you got all these fancy schmancy drawings.
Why don't you use Trading?
Yeah, why not use Trading?
I don't know, man, cause I just, I, I trade options right on TOS, so it's just like, it's all built in, I can just switch and execute, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Trading is awesome, bro.
I know it is. Dude, if somebody integrated the two of them together, they'd be a quadrillionaire.
But I also like how complex yours looks, looks super fancy.
Yeah, I use TOS when I'm like, uh, they, the, the replay feature is not great, but it's better than the, it's better than Trading B one, cause Trading B one gives you just the candles, it doesn't show you how they print.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, it, it, the, yeah, the, um, the replay feature on, um, on TOS is kind of whack like that, takes a while to load, but the replay feature on Ninja Trader, I think, I, I find is the best, and if you don't have a Ninja Trader account, you can open one up and deposit like twenty bucks, I think it's the account, and then it's like four bucks a month for the data or something like that, so it's, it's worth it.
Yeah, that's what I did, except it's a Ninja Trader, like, from Trading View is so easy, I went to Ninja Trader. I deposited like a little bit of money and I'll, and I, I tried to learn it, I watched YouTube videos, I was like, forget this, dude.
I remember that, I was there really, when you tried to do it, I tried the same thing.
Hey, but you can change the. Like, hell of cool stuff.
Yeah.
All right, we did that, huh?
Um, shit, what was I gonna say too, is, uh?
Golly bless you.
Yeah, we're at the, uh, okay. Oh, okay, and then so why do I have these, oh, these are just price levels I had marked from here, so yeah, you're this is like the high from, yep, okay, so this is like, the, the, again, you just want to be, I'm always mindful of like what's to the left, so like if I was long, I would be looking at like this high of day here, this is the this is the day before Easter, right, so this is the day prior to the gap down, so like, now I filled over the gap, right? Because there was a huge gap down here, I filled over it, we could probably remove this and remove remove this, and, and so I would just be looking at like, well, here's, let me zoom in. Uh, here's Thursday's high of day, and so, you know, we're pushing now up into that area and just to be mindful of like what I'm approaching, and so like if whatever my target was, is like my final target, like where do I think this is reasonably gonna go? My first, my real thought would have been is we're gonna fill this gap, which, I guess to be fair, we did, dude, hold on, I'm gonna okay, just to see, so, I would have had this gap, this would have been the gap to fill, right, this like shady green box, we fill this gap, we pull back down into like damn near the golden zone part of the area and we like, we like rocket ship out of it, so, um, depending on, if I was long in here, like from the orb trade or whatever. I would have, um, you know, I would have been targeting the gap felt, like that's, that's it, I'm out, like gap is filled, I'm gonna jump out. And then I'd be like, oh, wait, it's still going, you know, like it, nope, it just dropped a hundred points. Um, and then, I mean, you know, I may not even retake it, cause I'd be like, well, that's a fantastic trade, like I just got the whole gap filled, that's, that's my move, you know? Um, and be done, so, but then like anything to the left, just be mindful of like what's to the left and then, cause we come crashing down here and this is, this is the ten. Um, and the ten minute flip back bullish is like really weak. It's a weak flip like near the highs, like this is not good, you know, and then of course there's probably news or a bond auction or some shit. But, uh, alright guys, we're at two hours, holy shit. It has been a while, um, yeah, let's, yo, you guys good if we wrap it up?
Yeah, okay, one last thing, I mean, and this is like a trading question, so like a fair question. Um, do you think I should continue off with MNQ or should I, cause I have no idea how to ease into NQ, I'm being honest, and I don't know if I should just jump in or if I should save up a little bit on the account and then go straight into NQ, like what do you think I should do? I don't know if it's like a.
How did you, how did you pass your account?
Uh, with MNQ.
Yeah, but like, what did you, what was your, what was your style, how many cons?
Uh, I would do like three or five cons with MNQs.
Okay, yeah, you're, you're, there, there's another trader that I talk to often, uh, hopefully he'll watch this video. Um, that, I, it's okay with you guys, I would like to post it like on YouTube and just let us, everybody in House of Stacks see it.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, cool, I feel like we're not sharing anything like totally proprietary, we're just talking about maple stuff and, you know, price action in general.
Yeah.
Um.
No, they'll find out you like last of us, huh?
Yeah, I guess so, yeah, and then, uh, and then, that's it, that's it, um. Uh, what should we call it though, uh, you know, I think like he does the same thing too, you know, like passing, he was trading a lot with three to five, I think you can do a lot with three to five. Like when the volatility really picked up, there were a lot of times that I traded only three to five. And I like put together a lo- like a long string of successful days, and part of the reason for that is without a doubt, because it allowed me to size for bigger risk, and so I could widen my risk envelope, even if my targets were relatively consistent. And I understand that that might have resulted in like, instead of like two to one or three to one trades. More like one point five and one to one trades, or even some trades that like, when they were over, you calculated out and you would be like, well, damn, Joe, that wasn't even one to one, that was less than. But the important part to remember is that risk reward is only one piece of the profitability equation. And so when you're looking to try to set yourself up for success, if, if your win rate is extremely high. You can get away with a one to one or sub one to one risk reward when the trade finally plays out. But the, also the thing too is like, we're in an environment where volatility is very high, you, like, it's very, very news driven. And you would be foolish to not trail stop and, and like protect yourself, especially if you have, you know, modest, modest targets. So like, there are some times where it's like, well, Joe, like, you only made, you know, fifty bucks on this trade, because you trailed your stop and you got stopped, yeah, okay, but I didn't lose. And I would have lost, so like, you know, yeah, it's okay, like, it's a crappy RR trade, but like, I did what I job and, and a big part of that and a big part of your job is protecting yourself, you passed a fifty K eval, right?
Yeah.
Dude, that's, that's a, you, you have a two thousand dollar account, if you were to put, okay, well, I guess I shouldn't say it quite this way, because I can't advise you. But if I, I'll speak about what I have done.
I won't treat it as advice.
Yeah, 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 but like, for any, anybody for any, like, listening, right, this is legitimately what I've done, I put two thousand dollars into a, a cash account and traded micros off of it, right, and like, yes, I could have taken a mini, you know, I think I could have even taken two minis technically by ninja margin standards, but the point is, is that like, it's a two thousand dollar account, I can only tolerate like a couple losses with minis before, I can't even take minis again. Because now I don't have enough margin to cover it, and if they close you out because the trade dips against you too far. You have to pay a margin fee for getting closed out, so it's like adding insult to injury. So with, if, if you only have a two thousand dollar account with Topstep, like, and I've done this, like, I understand it. And, and it's a milestone to have passed your first eval, then stay with micros, which is what you know, and you because you can have a large number of losses in a row and still have an account. On NQ, you can't do that, on NQ, you also can't have scales, so like
Two losses and you're basically cooked.
You're basically cooked, yeah, exactly, and so, whereas with minis, like, what's your, if you earn five cons, what's your typical risk, twenty points?
Yeah, I mean, some of my risks are literally like nine points, depending on what the trade that I take, but yeah, let's say twenty points.
Okay, so let's say twenty points, twenty times, uh, you know, uh, two dollars, right, is, it's like a two, it's like two hundred dollars, right? Five cons, times twenty points is a hundred, times two dollars, no, if you get two hundred dollars. Okay, so let's just say with slippage, it's two fifty, and slippage and commissions, you could lose eight trades in a row before you blow that account. What is the probability you lose eight trades in a row, when is the last time you lost eight trades in a row?
Never.
Exactly, no, never, you know, dude, if you, if you lost four trades in a row, you'd be like, hold on, timeout, there, there is something wrong. With these four trades, I, I gotta figure this out, the market has shifted, some, suddenly something's not working, I'm making large mistakes. You, you, you have enough time to press pause, right?
Yeah, okay, I got you, yeah, that's, that's what I figured I was gonna stick with, but I wanted to hear your thoughts anyways, cause I always appreciate your insight.
That's my.
Furthermore, also, you know. It's totally fine, and also, you know, I, I've had plenty of instances where I'll be like, I'll, I'll take my three to five cons on MNQ and my, uh, my I'll get like a really good move, but next thing I know, it's just like forty points and I made like a hundred twenty dollars, a hundred fifty dollars, I'm like, what the hell? That's such BS, what are you talking about, what do you mean I made a hundred fifty dollars? That's it?
Yeah.
It's, so it kind of stuck, cause especially since you need two hundred dollars, uh, for payout, for five days of those, it's like damn, man, like I would hate to take a trade that, you know, goes up thirty points, forty points, and then I get stopped and, you know, I only made hundred seventy, hundred fifty dollars, it's like, that's kind of
Yeah.
Cause I mean, we gotta, we gotta get two scales to get two hundred dollars, like I, we gotta get forty points to get two hundred dollars, that's
So if we get break even, it's like you're fucked, you're cooked, that's it.
Yeah.
I got one scale, great, that, that day doesn't count.
But at the same time, I'd, I'd also much rather just
I'd rather keep my account.
Yeah, and to keep the account.
Yeah, well, and here, and here's the thing though, too, though, is like, if you maybe sized up or just targeted only bigger trades and then you're like, okay, the first five days in a row, you get two hundred plus dollars. You're, you're eligible for a payout of two hundred dollars, right, but like, if you just did barely two hundred for five days in a row, your account balance is now one thousand. If you, you're entitled to take up to half of that, which would be five hundred, but if you take five hundred, your stop on this account will move from negative one thousand. They'll move to zero, you only have five hundred dollars, like, yes, you know, so, it, so, and so as you start if you were to trade the first like five to whatever, eight days, right? And five to ten days, and you only make a hundred fifty a day, whatever, whatever, right? If you're, if you, if you're just excessively green, hey, I made twenty bucks today, that's fine, hey, I made a hundred fifty bucks today, that's fine. When you get to the end of the two weeks, it's like, okay, well now, you know, my account balance is built up to maybe over a thousand dollars or whatever. And let me just add one micro, if I add one micro to this and I take it off at the first target, a lot of these days might move over the two hundred dollar threshold. And, okay, but if, even if they don't, I'm just padding myself more on the account and you would continue to build it up. Here's the thing too, right, is like, how many months, uh, well, I don't want to ask this, I don't want, I don't want this to be an embarrassing answer. Do you mind saying, cause people might watch this video, do you mind saying how long it took you to pass the eval?
Oh, I mean, it, it's embarrassing, all right, but like, it's all good, I don't want up to it, it took us like, what, you know, eight months, nine months?
Uh, yeah, so.
But the, the thing is, to be fair though, at the start, we were really, I mean, we had an idea, but like, our, our system was our system really didn't get like fully refined to like a consistent amount, until like the last like what, three months?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Like fully consistent, furthermore, we would keep making dumb mistakes that, I mean, for anyone watching, yeah, just raise, oh my God, I would, I would be revenge trading, I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah, emotional, just like, I say that's probably the first like three, four months of trading tops, so they're like, it's just like, we probably would have passed if our emotions weren't, so.
Oh, yeah, not even that, but the amount of times that I would get close to passing it, and then I would do something stupid, cause I would get pissed at a trade that I took. And then down it back down by like a thousand. And then I'm back down by like a thousand. Oh, no, not even. I really should have passed it within the first like two months. I would just make a ton of really, really dumb blunders.
And again, like stupid mistakes. Yeah, it's serious, like, it's not even like, we're like, oh, we're like a, on a completely different system that doesn't work. It's just like, okay, who in their right mind would do what we just did?
And then we would get upset and revenge state and like I said.
And then we'd be like, oh, my God, the system's not working. In reality, we're just like overthinking like, all right, bro.
We start bugging out about, I need a new strategy. No, 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 no. You don't need a new strategy. You need to stay with your strategy. It's good. And like I said, you know, we, we, we really haven't gotten to a point where I think we couldn't even be considered remotely somewhat competent, not even competent, cause I mean, I haven't had a first payout and not even passed, but we didn't get like remotely. Yeah, we, we, it's really these last like three months that I think we've really gotten to a point where it's like, all right. You're starting to get a decent grasp of it. Before that, it was, yeah.
Totally. So dude, like, well, I guess that's, that's kind of the point though, right? Is that you guys have exercised an extreme amount of patience and diligence to get to this point. So if you've done that and, you know, have you guys blown a lot of evals?
No.
Uh, I blew mine like twice.
I blew mine once.
Yeah, I blew mine like twice.
Dude, so you guys, with the fee, you're into this for under, you're three hundred bucks or so. The tops, like, yeah, your first payout is gonna be so sweet, because if you can get it on this account, you're gonna, you're gonna become a green trader. You're gonna move into a, 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 a group of people that there are not very many of, right? So even, even though, and even though you might be like, well, I spent three hundred on this, but I only, you know, I took out a five hundred dollar payout. Leave account, you know, it's two hundred dollars green. You're fucking green. Like, you are green, baby. Like, hell, yeah. It's, it's nothing to write home about, but it's a start, right? And every business celebrates when they make their first dollar and that's what prop trading really is all about. You're the business. You know, so like, so what's the difference, guys? You know, if you trade small, you trade light, you build some confidence, right? You get the jitters out, right? Cause you're gonna be jittery as hell. Oh, I'm on a, I'm on a, I'm on a comp. Not on a combine anymore now. I'm on a XFA, you know, I'm on my funded account like this shit matters, right? This could lead to payouts. You're gonna have a series of thoughts that are just going to race through your mind every day and you just have to be like, no, I'm just doing the same damn thing I've been doing, right? Like, I just gotta be chill. And if I only make a hundred bucks, who cares that it doesn't count towards a payout? Because it's going to count towards a payout. It's gonna count towards that first one. So it, it does count, right? I'm just, I, I still made money. Like, yes, my day doesn't count, but I still made money. And that's like, when I talked about earlier, towards like, um, just getting that day to count on Apex, like in my head, I've had this two fifty goal. I've kind of missed it a couple days because two fifty across eight trading days is two K. So every time I can take out two K, that's kind of like where that number comes from. So like, I had, I had a, um, one day where I didn't trade really at all. So I just make the day count, I took one micro and targeted fifteen point stop, fifteen point target and just let it hit and thankfully it hits. I made twenty nine bucks or something, you know? So like, I'm kind of like quote unquote down, but it didn't matter, cause that day counted. I'm down from the two fifty goal, but that day counted like, hey, I, I counts as a day. I made another thirty bucks towards whenever that payout is, you know? It doesn't matter, cause I'm just trading micros on these accounts and like my Apex account, guys, like I'm trading very small. It's like four to five micros tops. Targeting two hundred fifty bucks and it's like one to two trades and like, that's it. I'm just trying to like perpetually farm because Apex is so tight on their rules.
Yeah.
So I can manage risk a lot better. I can't, I can't sit through a thirty point drawdown with two micros. Like, no way. Like, they're gonna, they're, they would just be like, what the hell? They would just be like, what the hell, Joe? Like, you just were down twelve hundred dollars on this trade. That's not gonna work. But that's, that's on two minis, right? But like on four micros, you know, or five micros, that's six hundred dollars in drawdown. Well, that's fine relative to what the balance is. It's gonna be, always be fine. It's gonna be fine relative to what my profits are too.
Yeah.
So, and even then, like, that's not happening all that often, cause if I'm getting down sub twenty, I'm like, yo, dude, you, you, there's something wrong here, dude. You might, might wanna just jump out of this.
Yeah.
So yeah, I would, I would just strongly encourage you, like, keep the mindset the same, right? The, the thought process is the same. Everything's fine. Do what you've been doing. If it helps you pass, you, you've already proven that doing this, right? You can make three K. Odds are, you had, you had, you know, a few days in there that were definitely over two hundred dollars and you it's kind of like, what's that saying, man? Like, making the first million is the hardest, right? And the second million comes twice as fast as the first one, right? Because now you know how to do it. You already know how to make three K in the account. You're just gonna do it again.
Yeah.
And cause if you take three, if you made three K and you take a five hundred, a fifteen hundred dollar payout, you leave yourself fifteen hundred dollars in drawdown, the equivalent of having just taken two losing trades. So still, when's the last time you took six losers? And then, you know, you can size down one micro or two micros less, whatever, to help build it back up. But you could now say, well, I spent three hundred dollars to Topstep, they, I just five X my money. Yeah, it took me a while, but in the time that it took me, I made money while learning a skill that I can now use to then grow and continue to extract profits from the market long term. I have, in learning how to fish, I got paid.
Yeah. Yeah.
Makes sense, fellas?
Yeah, honestly, it was a great conversation. I really appreciate you got, uh, you being on this call with us.
Yeah.
As usual, you know, it's, it's super helpful for us. So it really means a lot.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. It's um I would just say this, like to just, like as a closing point, you know, I have definitely restricted the amount of times and the people that I do this with, because I've recognized that a lot of folks are not actually willing to put in the effort and to, and to study and to develop their own system and their edge, you know, consistently. And it's really just like my, me repeating myself over and over the same things. I've never felt like we've had a conversation where I've repeated myself like, hey, we talked about this like the last three times we talked. It's never been like that. It's always new and intriguing questions and then what about this scenario? What do you think about that? You know, and then you, you'll like incorporate different things or talk about it. And the biggest thing too is where, you know, kind of the mark of a trader, when I asked you where was your entry earlier, what, you know, you didn't give me, oh, I entered right here. You gave me the entire reason, the whole model for why you entered right there, which is, you know, in, in my opinion, going to be one of the things that continues to drive your success. So for anybody listening who's like, wow, I'd really like to have a conversation one on one with Joe, like, you know, you just gotta show me you're putting in the effort and you guys have always shown that. So I have no problem doing these conversations with you both anytime. I think they're always very, uh, high quality conversations. I'm glad I remembered to record this entire one. And like, we'd be happy to do it again, guys. So I wish you both the best of luck and I will not be surprised when you tell me the payouts are coming.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So that really does mean a lot coming from you.
Yeah, of course, guys, of course. Um, so have a great night. Enjoy the rest of your weekend and, uh, I will send you guys the link once I get this posted up, okay?
Awesome. All right, appreciate it.
Take care, Joe.
Take care, guys. Yeah, see you later.
Yeah.